Although the name of the complainant was redacted, but he says he's here. So, um, the complaint says that it concerned itself with live music that was being played outside on the premises. And it was described as very loud, annoying, and intrusive. And the individual said that he contacted Kevin and Kathy in an attempt to straighten things out. And he was down at Marigold Street, which I guess is in reasonably close proximity to the loft. And he said that you went down to his premises, I guess, and you agreed with him. And I'm gonna get your take on this. I'm just saying right now what he's saying. He's saying you agreed that it was loud. And you would work with him to find a solution. And then, for the next few weeks, they, which I assume he's referring to the two of you, would park in front of our homes and monitor the sound to find a good level. "They," meaning again, you, mentioned that the PA system that was being used was mounted on tripods, and their plan was to take the speakers off the tripods and reposition them so they weren't pointed in this person's direction and lower the volume as a means of resolving the problem. And he said, "Whatever they did, it worked fine and was acceptable." And he was told to contact you if it became a problem again, and that this solution worked for approximately a week. The noise levels went up again to the point where it sounded like some of the performers were standing, quote, "in my front yard," close quote. He again contacted you and was assured the issue would be addressed. Once again, the noise levels came down to an acceptable level, and he texted you a note thanking you for your diligence. Once again, several days later, the noise levels were back up again. He sent another text to which he received a reply that they were legally licensed to have music outdoors seven days a week, that they had done all they could to make us happy, and they considered the matter closed. Then he says he was down to the venue and took pictures of a typical band setup. The speakers are on tripods. And the speakers are pointed directly at Route 28, and the volume levels are very, very loud despite his having been told that they turn the levels down. He asked that the license for outdoor music be rescinded. And then he says, "Further, at the very least, they should be required to turn their speakers inward toward the Cove rather than outward towards our neighborhood, and a drastic reduction in volume levels enforced." That's basically what the issues are. And I recite that not only for your benefit, but for the benefit of the board and anyone else who's present, you know, that's affected by this. So, why don't I go to you now, Kevin and Kathy? You can address those issues.
Okay.
Did you, and let me know, did you meet with him and what attempts you made to try to resolve this?
I wrote you in a little letter that I'd like to read, and then we-
Sure.
...ask questions after that.
That's fine.
All right.
Go ahead.
So, basically, my name is Kathy Gianno, as you know, owner of the Loft Restaurant and the Loft Shack that we're here to talk about today. So Kevin and I are aware of the noise complaints lodged against the Loft Shack by Mr. Wenkel. As he stated, we have spent a good part of the summer trying to monitor these as a team, these concerns. Our first encounter, when Mr. Wenkel, Kevin, and I met in front of his home, I'd like to point out that although his letter said that we all agreed it was loud, my memory is that at the time, the music level was barely noticeable, and that we actually had to wait for passing traffic on 28 to stop before we can even hear anything at all. Nevertheless, we also stated to Mr. Wenkel that we did agree to work with him because he was clearly upset, and we wanted to be good neighbors as well. Mr. Wenkel explained to us his desire to sleep in right in the afternoon with his windows open, and he could not do this because he was being bothered by the noise. Throughout the summer, Kevin and I drove by Mr. Wenkel's home every day that we had music from the day of his first complaint to try to monitor the noise levels, because we do have different bands that play there. And the PA systems are very different, so a three-on-one might not be a three-on-another noise level. So we were monitoring that closely. We lowered and redirected speakers, as he says. We turned down the volume levels, all the while checking in with him to see, you know, his satisfaction and gauge his satisfaction level, which was intermittent at best, his satisfaction. So unfortunately, there were some factors we felt were out of our control, such as wind direction, I think made a little bit of a difference. And also, we did lose nine full-grown trees with the tornado that stood between Mr. Wenkel and I. So that also could have contributed to some of the noise level problems as the season went further. Either way, we couldn't come to a conclusion on what the best thing to do was. So, two years ago, this board granted us a license for entertainment seven days a week. Although the license allows us to have entertainment seven days a week, we only have music five days a week. We're also allowed to have up to three-piece bands. We only have one person or duets at most. We only schedule our entertainment between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m., so it's not to disturb neighbors in the later evening hours. Also, I think it's worth pointing out that we went all last year with the same entertainment with no complaints at all, and all of this year with just this one. I understand Mr. Wenkel is new to the area and certainly has a right to quiet enjoyment. Obviously, Route 28 is a heavily-traveled road with many commercial businesses. This is our business, and it is located in a pretty dense community, business community, that attracts many locals and tourists to Yarmouth. While we do want to come to a fair resolution, revoking our outside music license, as Mr. Wenkel suggests, would not only be unfair, but it would be detrimental to our business as a whole. As you know, we are located on the Cove property. We are a sister business to the Cove, as we are tenants in that location primarily to serve the guests of the Cove. Michael Edwards is the general manager of the Cove. Unfortunately, he's out of town and unable to attend tonight, but I would like to just preserve his right to make a statement on this issue in the future if need be. So, I don't know that, like I said, we haven't been successful in coming to a conclusion. We thought maybe one possible solution was having some sort of a decimal noise test conducted where we could stay within a certain actual gauge. That's just, you know, just a recommendation.
Okay. Um, sir, what was your name?
My name, Dan Wenhke. There's no L in my name.
Okay. Do you want to respond to that?
Yes.
If you do, why don't you go to that podium?
If I could.
How do you spell your last name? Your first name is Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a picture-
Why don't you tell us where you live, first of all?
I live at 23 Marigold Road.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I have this picture I'd like to submit, and I'm sorry I didn't print up enough of these. I didn't know how many people were gonna be here, but these are signed petitions from other people in the neighborhood.
Is it the same document? Or different?
Yes, it's the same document.
Are they different? The same document?
Yes, I have the original.
Did we have a copy of that?
Yeah, I'll make sure you see everything that he's given us, obviously. I just wanna look at the picture first and pass it around. He has a note on it. Speaker on tripod taken on 9/30/19. Wait, once I look at this, I'll pass it down. Then we'll let you see.
Is there something on a tripod? Are they not allowed? Is there something in a special permit they're not allowed to have something on a tripod?
Not that I'm allowed. I'm gonna look at that. Norm?
We actually didn't say we would take them off the tripods. We told them we would take the tripods down and turn them in different directions, which we did do.
All right, this petition, I'll read it to you, so, and then I'll let you look at it. "We, the undersigned residents of Marigold Road, West Yarmouth, are very unhappy and wish to register a noise complaint against the Loft Restaurant's outdoor facility at the Cove complex. On Route 28 in West Yarmouth, during the summer, their outdoor bands, DJs, and karaoke events are unnecessarily loud, annoying, and an intrusion on our neighborhood. We've tried to negotiate a solution in good faith with the management of the Loft to no avail, and find a level of garbled noise coming from their establishment seven days a week unacceptable. We seek redress. And in light of this nuisance, we would like their license for outdoor musical entertainment rescinded, or at the very least have their speaker systems lowered to ground height and repositioned to point inward toward the Cove property confines instead of outwards towards our neighborhood and the noise levels drastically in capital letters reduced." Kathy Barabie that signed this, and Demetrius, I can't read his-
I can't pronounce his last name either. He's Greek, sir.
20, uh, 20 Marigold, 26 Marigold, and you signed it at 23 Marigold.
Yes, sir. And Fred Clayton, who's my next-door neighbor, was also a signatory, and the original complaint that I emailed to you guys-
So you sent a petition, so you have, just to be clear, you have two other people that live on Marigold that signed this?
These are, this was the only, I just learned this morning that this meeting, or yesterday morning, that this meeting was gonna be taking place.
Okay.
So I didn't have a whole lot of time to canvass my whole neighborhood.
All right.
So- The other two people, are they at the same address?
Excuse me?
Are the other two people, are they both at 26?
No, they're at, he's at 23, one's at 26, and if I can read this, Demetrius and-
He lives at 20.
M-A-R-N, M-A-T-S-H-N-L, or something like that. At 20 Marigold, I guess it is. Do they have the standard petition?
I just got it.
Let's see that. All right, I read it, so I'll send. All right. You heard what they had to say, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and we read your complaint, so do you want to respond to what they said?
I have a statement I've written, if that's okay. "I'm here this evening to represent myself and three of my neighbors to express our frustration and annoyance with the Loft Restaurant's live outdoor music events. I've tried to work reasonably with their management, spending the month of August talking and texting with them about the level of noise that echoes through our neighborhood in a very intrusive and stressful manner throughout a typical week during the summer. At first, things went well, as I wrote in our initial complaint, but after a few days, the noise would be back. I would send a text to Mr. Richards letting him know, and the noise levels would drop again for another few days, when they would return to the previous level despite whatever changes to their system they had made. This went on for the entire month of August. Initially, Mr. Richards claimed he needed to establish a, quote, 'baseline,' unquote, as to where the PA systems needed to be to find a compromise. I accepted him at his word, and indeed, a happy compromise was reached, but only temporarily. I was told the speakers mounted on tripods would be lowered, speakers repositioned so they were not pointed at our neighborhood, and the volume reduced. This may have occurred, but as I said, temporarily. I refer you to the picture submitted, which was taken on August 30th, which clearly shows the PA speakers being used as mounted approximately six to seven feet in the air and pointed at our neighborhood, and they were playing at a high-volume level. This is the reverse of statements made to me via text in conversation with Mr. Richards. My neighbor, Demetrius, lives across the street from me. He's a fisherman and consequently works very hard, gets up at 4:00 a.m. every day to go to work. He goes to bed very early in the evening and has a great deal, has a great deal of trouble trying to get to sleep due to the noise coming from the Cove. We'd all like to be able to enjoy our homes and yards during the summer months, being able to open our windows for fresh air, have friends over, and enjoy our yards and property free of three to four hours of garbled music and DJs swirling through our neighborhood. I tried to work with Mr. Richards and Ms. Gianno to find a solution. Apparently, none of it is forthcoming. As the final weekend of September, the noise was even louder than earlier in the season when I first brought this to their attention. It seems that if we aren't actively complaining each time their music is being presented, concern with our neighborhood is forgotten or ignored. We don't, we didn't want it to come to this point, but we're all fed up with this and doubt the veracity and ability of the Loft management to keep their word to be a good neighbor. This is why we seek to have their license for outdoor entertainment to be rescinded. We want our homes and neighborhood to be free of this nuisance. This is detrimental to our lifestyles and may affect our property values. We feel that Loft has abused their privilege to have outdoor musical events, and in future, will continue with this behavior."
How long, sir, have you lived at your current address?
I purchased that house back in November. If I had known that this was going to be something that was going on during the summertime, I never would've bought the house.
November of 18?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at the Board of Appeals decision that accompanied the original application. There was a hearing on May 11th, and, um, yeah, we, one of the conditions was, it said that any amplification be provided by the musicians only.
Correct. And that's how it, and that's how it works. So, do you mind if I interject?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, really, first and above all things, we, and I hope that some of the narrative does show sincerity, we want to be good neighbors. We want him to have a good life, and we want to run our business. We certainly don't want to intrude upon him in any way, shape, or form, or have our business hurt for a chance to provide for our families. That all started, that train of thought of being good neighbors started two years ago, when you gave us the license for seven days, and we decided to go for five days. When you gave it to us for May through October, when we decided to only go June, July, and August. When you gave it to us for up to 9:00 o'clock at night, and we decided to stop at 8:00 o'clock at night.
So you haven't had any music since the end of August?
No.
No, end of September, only October.
September.
October. We only have-
You don't do anything in October?
We do nothing in October, nothing in May. And we go, we went longer this, we had the last year, we went to September 26th or 27th.
The last weekend.
Yeah, the last weekend of September, and the year before, we didn't go that far. So, just, I bring this up just to show you our train of thought is trying to be, you know, good neighbors. We don't have three-piece bands. We have either duos or singles. And we live at the time that we do it, and the number of days that we do it, the number of months that we do it. So that was the start. We first became aware of Dan's complaint. He left a voicemail for Michael Edwards, the general manager of the Cove. Immediately, we went over there, and we wanted to, you know, hear for ourselves what he was experiencing. And what we explained to him was, you know, there's, you know, five different acts, and because of the law, they, that we agree, that we follow, they all bring their own PA system. So, you know, the level number three on the twos and the ones in that guy is, may not be the same level number three on the ones in that guy. So, we had a look at it for each night to make sure, and then go back and tell them, okay, you guys should put yours on two, and you should always put yours on five, you know, depending on what their system was. They all have very minor systems, and it's a very small area that we're trying to put music out to. Every time that Dan complained, we made sure that they had it on the level that they promised they would have it on when he said it was good, that, the week he said it was good. And we turned them, instead of just facing out, we turned them in a little bit so that it, you know, was more towards the bar. They're, they're always gonna be on a tripod or whatever, which is not illegal.
They have to be.
They just have to be. The speakers don't sit on the ground. I mean, just, people bring their music, and some of them aren't even on tripods. They just, the new ones they make, they're just like a big wand, like a stand. But they're all very thin little, they're just, you know, duo, single-person speakers. So, every time that we played music and we went over and we asked them how it was, and then, as he said in his complaint, there was a weak streak. He went, "Okay, you guys did a good job." And then we didn't continue to check, because we figured we were maintaining those levels. And then he complained again, and we'd go back and check and say, "Okay." And I'll just say, you know, he has a right to be happy in his home, and we want that for him. I've been in this business for four decades, and I'm very confident that none of our music violates any sort of public decimal issue, or would violate, be considered any sort of a public nuisance. I'm extremely confident that that is, that it would fell well beneath, it would fall well beneath those levels that are set by a town, to be considered to be a public nuisance above the decimal level. I feel very confident in that. Nevertheless, you know, whatever it takes for everybody to coexist, we're willing to adjust and be a good neighbor. I hope you can see by his statement, we've tried. And I'm sorry that we're here today and, you know, and we're willing to work it out. I will say also that I've talked to Fred Clayton. He didn't, um, 'cause he actually is a musician that is-
Used to play at our place.
-that's been playing at our place for many years, and he, um, he didn't, he expressed to me that he didn't have a problem with it. Maybe that's why he's not on the petition, and he didn't-
Where does Fred Clayton live?
He lives one house closer than, than Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you go across 28, so you come out of, there's the Cove buildings.
Yeah.
Then there's where the shack is. Then there's the driveway of the Cove. Then there's Route 28. Then you cross over Route 28, you go past, behind Heavenly and the roast beef place, and then that's Marigold Road. So there, across 28, and I think you have the fourth house on the left, and I think, um, Fred is the third. And I can tell you the last week that I went over there to try to get a feeling from Dan. What I usually would do, or Kathy would do, or we would do, we would pull up in front of his house in our car, and we'd text them saying, "We're out here. If you want to, you know, tell us, you know, how we're doing." In the first couple of weeks, we got communication. In the last week, we didn't. So I didn't know what his feedback was. But again, the bottom line really just is, we just, you know, we're, we've tried to be good neighbors. I mean, the funny thing is, when we originally went for our license, there was the ladies that were complaining that they used to hear the music from the Mill Hill. They lived across, remember they came and they, they opposed the license originally? And they, they lived across the water?
Yeah.
And they said, "Oh, when the Mill Hill was there, we used to hear all this music, and it was, we don't, make sure you guys don't do that." Those ladies kayak over two nights a week to enjoy the shack. So, we are trying, and we would continue to try to be the best neighbor we can be.
Could I be allowed to address that, please?
In a minute.
Okay, thank you.
In a minute. What, if anything, can be done to, you mentioned that you want to be a good neighbor, and you want him to enjoy his property. At the same time, you have a business to run, you want your entertainment venue. So, I think those are the issues. That's the balancing act that has to be achieved ultimately. What, if anything, can you do to accommodate his concerns? Can you, can you position those speakers away from his direction?
We, we can, and we intend to try, again, next year, of course, to do something that might, might fit better. We were thinking that next year, we would actually try to set up our bands in a different location, face in a different way. That would require permission from the Cove. We would need to get, you know, electricity, and there's also some furniture that we can't move, such as fire pits in the way there. So we, we have been talking about and thinking about changing the whole setup out there as best that we can with the restrictions now that we already have, because it's already built. But, yeah, we intend to still do it next year.
Yeah, we're happy to move-
We're gonna try to move our entertainment in a whole different direction.
And we shouldn't use the word "bands." We should, we'd be happy to move where the duo or the single person sets up.
Right.
We're happy to move that. And if the music goes the other way and it, and it helps, great.
Perfect.
But this is a no-brainer for us. We're happy to, we kept, we kept thinking we were doing the right thing, and he, he was happy, and then it would, it would be bad again, so-
It was very intimate, and it was hard to gauge.
You know, we were trying to, we were trying to find the right answer.
So, sir, what do you say to that? They're gonna try to take some efforts to reposition the music. Would that satisfy your concerns?
I would still like to see a drastic reduction in the volume levels. I think that pointing them inwards towards the Cove and bringing the volume way down might be a solution. But again, I've seen the space they're talking about. I'm an actor, I'm a writer, I've been a lead singer for a band, I know how these things work. There's no stage there, it's just a concrete slab. They could've done this back when I asked them to, at least address this problem, and nothing was done. And it was, and it was quiet for a while, and then it would come back up again.
All right, I get that, but going backwards isn't gonna help anybody, and that's really not why we're-
I understand.
That's really not why we're here. We're trying to, we're here to try to informally address the issue.
Okay.
This is not, let me, let me just speak for a second.
Surely.
This is not a hearing to suspend or revoke their license. That's not what this is. If, if we were gonna do that, I think we'd have to give them a more specific notice so that they could prepare for that and get witnesses or get whatever evidence that they wanted together. We're here to try to resolve a problem, so that's what I want to talk about. Maybe we can, maybe we can't. So, that, that's what I'm asking you. So you're talking about redirecting the speakers. You said drastic reductions in the noise level. I mean, I don't know what that means exactly. Um, that, you know, that's something really that's not quantifiable.
We are happy to, to, to set the acts, the solo and duos, in a different spot. We're happy to do that. We're happy to bring the music down and set, again, but everybody has a different PA system, but we're happy to take, like, next year, that first, you know, week or two, you know, it's the same bands that we use all the time. We can say, "Okay, yours works best on three, yours works best on three, ours is best on four." We're happy to do that, and to reposition it. We have no problem with that.
If I may?
Go ahead.
They had the whole month of August to fix this.
Again, you're going, you're walking backwards again. I don't want you to do that.
I understand that. I'm saying, in future, what's to keep them from constantly tinkering around with it for another summer to suit their needs and not the neighborhood's needs?
Not-
I'm not alone in this complaint. There are four of us.
To answer your question, there's, there's nothing to stop them from doing that, but there's nothing to stop you from coming back to the town if they continue to do it. And ask, and I, and I can't give you any kind of, you know, just hypothetical response, but depending on the allegations, the board could conduct a hearing to suspend or modify or revoke the entertainment license. I'm not saying they would do that, but that would be, that would be what, you know, your question, what could you do about it? That's what you could do. But that's not why we're here. I, I understand. I can detect the animosity and the, and the bad feelings. I mean, that's pretty obvious, but I don't know if it's just gonna help anybody to just rehash all of that. So, I'm gonna go to the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions of any of these people or any suggestions? Tracy?
I can just say that I've been to this cabana several times over the summer, as well as frequented the Loft. And I can tell you that they're outstanding owners. I've seen them handle some difficult situations while I've been there, and I've been very impressed with them. I don't think the music is, or has, has been, in the times I've been there, been out of line or inappropriate. So I think that, you know, he's demonstrated that, you know, he, they take it serious, clearly. They went over there, they sit there, the gentleman has his number to text him. I mean, it's not like he's, he's, he's willing to work with them, so I think we need to continue to let them work it out. I'm sure Kathy and Kevin don't want to be here again under a scenario where we could be looking at altering the license. I mean, I think four to eight is completely appropriate, and I'm, I have a really hard time believing that on the other side of Route 28, I mean, I just know from where you park, you park towards, towards that area, and never, when I go to my car, can I even, could I, could I hear it? So, I'm not sure, based on some of his comments, that no matter what they did, he probably would-
Yeah, we just do three-hour increments. We just do five to eight. Three hour. We're allowed five hours, four to nine. We just do three.
So, I hope that they continue to work it out, but I'm, I'm very confident that level-headed people can do that, too.
Anyone else?
No.
My only observation, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, I agree with Kathy that the loss of the trees prob- the loss of the trees probably does have some impact on the, the neighbor's ability to hear the sound. And whereas Dan's house is to the north, and the prevailing wind is from the south in the summer, I also agree with Kathy that the, that the neighbor's ability to hear anything is probably entirely dependent upon the, you know, how hard the wind is blowing and what direction it's blowing out of. So I think taking that into consideration, and if Kevin and Kathy are willing to take measures to continue to be good neighbors and try to reposition those speakers away from 28 to try and help with that. You know, again, I'm not for modifying the license or taking any action.
No, and I don't think, you know, again, that's the objective of this hearing at this point. It's just to see if we can, what happened is, there's complaints, they go to Linda, and they keep coming to Linda, and Linda's like, "Hey, you know, you, you guys are the ones that are in control of the license."
But yeah, that was just my-
And so that's why it comes here, basically, so.
My observation is that I think it's largely dependent upon the wind direction. And that's why on some nights, you don't hear it, and on the same night, at the same level, you probably could, so.
Okay. Norm, you have anything?
No, I agree with Eric's comments. I think it's probably wind-related, and as Eric pointed out, summer, the winds from the, you know, the south most of the time are southwest. So, you know, that's going to create some additional issues in terms of volume. And, you know, pointing the speakers away from that, from 28, I think is, is the right thing to do. If that can be set up that way, that's, that's probably the, the most appropriate thing. You know, the, the question of renewal is a question that, you know, we'll have to take up at that appropriate time. And, you know, if, if there are continuous issues, you know, we have to pay attention to what the neighbors are saying as well, so.
So what I think the board is, what I think the consensus is on the board is that we're going to give the opportunity for the business to try to mitigate the noise, as they've suggested, along the lines that they've suggested. And that's all we're really trying to do at this point in time. If, if there's future problems, you can make your complaint again, you can file your petitions or whatever you think you have to do. And then, as the chairman, I would make a determination whether to go forward and have a, a hearing to alter, suspend, or revoke the entertainment license, depending on what the allegations were. But I, I want to see it resolved. I don't want to impact in a negative way the business's opportunity to, to make a living down here, or to take advantage of, of the license that they were able to obtain through the Board of Appeals and through this board. But on the other hand, and as you've acknowledged yourselves, there's the countervailing issues of his ability to enjoy his property. But I, I think you're in good faith, and I think that you'll take appropriate action to try to address these concerns and to mitigate the noise.
And thank you, everyone. And I think that when we do, Dan, get to talk to the Cove and actually try to map out a different setup completely, not just lower end, because I do think that you will see a big difference. I hope that you do.
It's not just me, it's my neighborhood.
Y'all, I hope y'all see a big difference.
We just, we hope to continue to work with you to make it right. We want you to be happy.
Okay, so the, the music isn't going on now, right? So we're talking next year when things start up again, and hopefully, situation will be improved. And thank you very much for coming in, I appreciate it.
And we appreciate you taking the time, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Six forty-five, if it matters, petition article review presentation.
Mr. Chairman and the board, we've been working with the ladies from this topic. This was initially brought up at Spring Town meeting, and at that time, there was a request that administration continues to work with the group to try to implement it at a later date when an article would come back. Pat Armstrong's been leading our effort, and so they did get a hundred signatures to be on the special town meeting. And Pat is here, and I believe that what you're going to hear tonight, we're in a much better position as a town to accommodate this article than we were back in May. But Pat will speak to that afterwards.
Can I, can I just ask a question before we start? At, at the town meeting, I believe Pat made a motion to table?
To postpone.
Indefinitely postpone.
Indefinitely postpone. So what is the legal process once an article has been indefinitely postponed?
Well, so there was some language challenges in that article as it was presented. So we worked out language that was more amenable to the town, and in this particular instance, they were able to get the requisite hundred signatures needed from registered voters to appear with this question on the fall town meeting. So that would have to be addressed at next spring. We'd have to, if this were to pass this year, we would just, at that time, withdraw that article that was, it was indefinitely postponed. So we'll have a conversation with the moderator as it relates to that. But it is a bit different, a little bit, the language to accommodate some provisions that we had requested from the petitioners.
It's only zoning that prohibits it from being brought back, I think, for two years.
Two years, right?
Yeah. Zoning articles, if they fail, they're not, yeah, they're not allowed to be brought back. But this, there's no, there's no law about, they could bring this back every year.
Right. When it's indefinitely postponed, it's just out there, and it hangs out there indefinitely, and if nothing's done, it's kind of dies on the vine. It's-
Well, what is the process for bringing back?
Well, they achieve the process right here.
You'd bring a new article?
New article, with new signatures for special town.
Okay, okay.
So I'm Jan Hively, and we did initiate the petition and got a hundred and sixty signatures, actually. And I'd just like to introduce the people who are here. We have Madhavi Van Katesan, who's the, the founder and executive director of Sustainable Practices Incorporated. We have Amanda Murphy, who's part of the Yarmouth team, lives in South Yarmouth. And Suzanne Nickerson has been here from Sustainable Practices, is active in the Chatham Group, and I live in West Yarmouth. But what we want to do today is just to have Madhavi give us an overview of what the big picture has been for work on, in Cape Cod towns on this particular topic. And then to follow it with Amanda reviewing the outreach that's occurred since the town meeting. We were so grateful for the support that we've been given and for the communications that we've had. We wanted to list those communications, and I'm going to be putting something, two pages in front of you. One of them is the rewording that will be asked, requested as an amendment to the initial proposal that you can see here. And the second is a, a supplement to the FAQ that you received in your packet, a supplement showing more about costs and sources for funds. And then we have the little list of community outreach. So if you don't mind, I'll pass those around to each of you. And Madhavi, could you begin your-
Yes. Good evening, and thank you so much for having us join you this evening. This is our second time going over some of these aspects with you, and we hope that you'll be able to be engaged with any questions you may have. As you may remember and recall, we started this petition in the spring of 2019. At that time, it was initiating, so we didn't have towns specifically to talk to you about. I'm happy to report that as of today, we can, we can say that we have six towns that have immediately adopted this. We have a few others that are in the works. And then, of course, we have filings in five going on six, Barnstable being the sixth one, and also work in Mashpee going on. So let me just give you a little bit of a brief overview of where we are, what we do, and what we're trying to accomplish. First of all, we are Sustainable Practices. We are an organization that's built out of these fifteen towns that comprise Barnstable County, Cape Cod. Our goal is to actually enhance the environmental aspects of our shared community. Primarily and fundamentally, we have a lot of things that are sold in our stores in general that are not consistent with the long-term health and well-being of both planetary life as well as human life. Plastic is just one aspect of that, and single-use plastic bottles is one very simple, tangible, yet very impactful element of that. So our goal in actually looking at plastic and single-use plastic bottles at that is to start to enhance people's understanding of the environmental and holistic consequences of consumption choices. As you may remember, I am an economist, I have a PhD in economics. This is an area that I specialize in, which is sustainability-focused economics. And one thing that people don't necessarily realize is, in our day-to-day lives, as rational economic agents, we are consumers, we are members of the investing public, to the extent that we have 401Ks or other types of investment vehicles, but fundamentally, we're also members of the government. Which means that if we want to have a well-functioning economy, we have to take into consideration the adverse impacts of our consumption choices, the fact that costs that are typically lower are lower because they're externalized to the environment, and costs are also lower because they are not being, we're not taking into consideration the most vulnerable elements which don't have a voice, which are the elements that we are dependent upon. So quickly, I'll just say this, what are the basic things that you need to live? Air, water, and food. And yet, every single one of them are contaminated based on the way we live with self-gratification only in mind. So our goal is, if you would look up for one moment, I know that you're predisposed and looking down, but this, as our group of people, we have over fifteen core members, one in each town on the Cape, with the exception of Bourne, where we're actually trying to grow that group. Single-use plastics, as many of you may already recall and also know just from the news, is a global problem. Many other countries have actually, including the EU, have banned the use of single-use plastics going forward, the US being a little slower, and sometimes probably related to the fact that we don't have it available to us to vote on. And that's something that we are trying to do through this process, is to allow the democratic process to determine the right thing that we should be doing. And we're focused specifically on town government, because town government is related to our tax dollars. And our tax dollars should be doing things that are positive for human and environmental health, especially on the Cape, where we are fundamentally determined, dependent upon the environment. For some people may know this, others people may not, but petroleum is a basis for plastic manufacturing. Even though you may hear of natural or some, the natural elements in plastic, typically that's just the estrogen, the plastic is still the petroleum byproduct. The issue is, you're using water even in the petroleum manufacturing process, which means that oftentimes, that's a contaminant and, and not drinkable after it's being, after the production of the plastic. But on top of that, you have other issues that we do know about and are merging and are also known to some people. The transportation of plastic, especially thin-film plastic, like what you drink out of, like the two bottles that you have in front of you, that actually causes leaching into the bottled, into the bottled water itself, and that has health implications. But on top of that, and perhaps more significantly, is for the few minutes of consumption life that you may have for that bottled water, that comes at a tremendous cost to both current and future generations. Plastic will never biodegrade, it only photodegrades. Even if it's recycled, it's down-cycled, which means it increases the amount of plastic in the environment in which we live. It is in our clothing fibers, and that's one way it gets into our water systems, it's in our carpet, it's in building materials, it's everywhere. So there's a false perception that recycling actually reduces the amount of plastic. It doesn't. It just increases the amount of plastic that's everywhere. We still need more plastic to create more bottles. And when you think about it being a petroleum-based product, that means it also has a greenhouse gas footprint. By 2050, it's estimated the plastic production will equate to twenty percent of the, of the global greenhouse gas emissions. And when you think about it from the US perspective, we are five percent of the planet's population, little less than that, over thirty percent of the planet's consumption of global resources. We think about it from a plastic perspective, we're almost two-thirds of the amount of plastic bottle consumption. So this is a US issue. I'm not going to go into the health effects, because my colleague right here, Amanda, can speak to that a little bit more in detail, but there are known and emerging. Our battle ban, and you have it in front of you, is focused primarily on looking at government, because of tax dollars. Citizens actually have some control and should have some control over determining where tax dollars are spent. So we're asking the town to not only take a leadership position, but also take a position in the best interests of the allocation of monies that are allocated to the town in good faith. We're asking the town to no longer purchase single-use plastic bottles with taxpayer money, nor allow the sale of beverages in single-use plastic containers on town property. The rationale is, I've already said this a few times, but fundamentally, it's because of the aspects of plastic that we do know, and what we also think in terms of government responsibility to its constituent public. We've had a successful pass in the spring term in five towns. Those were, the first one was Harwood, was Province Town, and that was through the Recycling Commission in Province Town that passed as a policy within that town. Wellfleet, Harwich, Chatham, and Orleans subsequently passed the ban article as it's written. And we recently proposed the article in front of the town of Eastham. Eastham did not have a fall town meeting, so we did not call town meeting through citizens' petition for the simple reason that we didn't want to have the town having to pay seven to ten thousand dollars, sort of counter to what we're saying about fiscal responsibility. But Eastham did take the ban and adopted immediately as policy, and actually excluded the two components of public health and safety, because they didn't think it was necessary. So that ban article has actually been taken by the Select Board to the Spring Town meeting warrant when they next meet. We also are having the same issue in Trual, because we're working the Recycling Commission there, and we assume that's going to happen. The ban, as it sits, is also on the fall town meeting warrants of Brewster, Dennis, Falmouth, and Sandwich. And Falmouth's Board of Selectmen accepted the article last night as written. We are working on a few different things with regard to water infrastructure. One of them is looking at a TAP app, which actually is in existence in Washington DC, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and Seattle, as well as a few other communities. This TAP app actually helps you download and see where local municipalities have water access available to them and what restaurants may actually allow for walk-in refills. It's a positive thing, and many, it would actually put us on the map with regard to other communities that have already been sort of progressive from that perspective. We already started tapping, we already started mapping this out, and we will have this at least five hundred locations, we're estimating, by the end of January. This is an opportunity that we feel is important for the Cape, to take a leadership position on, on an issue that we really haven't seen much leadership in our nation, but also to take a leadership position that, because of our tourist base, that also protects our environment and enhances the importance of protecting the public goods, which are our public lands and our public environment. Also draws more attention to the, to the preservation and quality of our municipal water sources, which is really important at a time when we're going through climate change activity, and we don't know what the long-term implications are with regard to the speed of climate change as we're seeing it today. And then even more so, because we are a tourist-based economy, we have an ability to influence the behavior of other communities as well, just by the fact that they come here and see what we have implemented and put in, put forth. This is a change that will come one way or another. Either you can be at the front of it, or you can be dragged. And we've already passed in six. We are very, very, I guess, wed to our belief that this is the right thing to do, and we will continue to promote this activity and this effort. And we really hope that Yarmouth will join in, because fundamentally, it's a good effort to be a part of at a time when leadership on this type of issue is needed. We have other initiatives that follow through after this, that are actually quite beneficial to the towns as well, and we really hope and look forward to the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Very hard to follow her, she's an excellent speaker. And she's given you a lot of really good information. Excuse me, I'd like to just follow up with something that you have a handout on. Since last May, when we were at the special town meeting, and that meeting was postponed, primarily because, I believe anyway, that it was felt that we weren't prepared- primarily because, I believe anyway, that it was felt that we weren't prepared to go forward the way we had it. And since that time, we've done a lot of community outreach, and also meeting with town departments and committees. So I think we're a lot more prepared now than we were back in May, and I hope you would take that into your consideration on, on the work and the effort that we've put into this. So, excuse me, as Jan mentioned, we did get 160 petition signatures. I'm sure we would have gotten a lot more, but it was raining out a lot. With those signatures, every person that we asked for a signature, we educated them along the way, so that it wasn't just, here, sign here, you don't need to know what it's about. We tried to let people know, and some people disagreed with us, and that's fine, but we educated them too. We've done presentations at both the South Yarmouth Library and the Yarmouth Port Library. We've tabled at St. David's, had a fair several months ago. We tabled there and gave out a lot of information. We've handed out both information and frequently asked question flyers to people. We're doing a mass mailing of postcards with the bylaw language and contact information. And we've, as members of Sustainable Practices, have attended several Cape-wide events, including the Sustainable Practices monthly film series in Chatham. And Motovy speaks at those meetings, and, and speaks on particular communities, what's coming up, what progress we've made, and provides information on the initiative. We've also been at the beach, the recent beach cleanup. We've worked with the recycling and DPW departments. We were at the Kohog Festival. We met a lot of Yarmouth people there. And we will be at the upcoming Oyster Fest. We have written countless letters to the editor. You've probably read several of those, and our supporters have helped us in that endeavor. There's also the Sustainable Practices website and Facebook page that we've directed people to for further information. And many of us have been contacted by residents who are interested in knowing more. We've also, since we started this initiative last, last winter, I guess it was, we've met with several department heads, including Jeff Colby, Dick Court, Dan Nappick, Pat Armstrong, Bruce Murphy, the Finance Committee. We'll be meeting with them tomorrow evening. The Recycling Committee, and Jan will be meeting with the Aging Services staff tomorrow. So, again, I hope you will take all of this into consideration. We've put out a really big effort here to get everybody involved with this, and educate people, and let them know what we're about.
I'm just going to add one thing, because Amanda was a little humble with regard to our relationships with these different festivals. We're co-sponsors for these events. So we helped actually drive the plastic-free component of this. And one thing just to also take into consideration, Harwich will actually be implementing this January 1st, 2020. They're the first implementer. And some of you may know Ed McManus. He is the Select Board person in Harwich, and he was one of the champions of this, in spite of the fact that they do have the Cranberry Festival, and that was a hurdle that he had to jump, because he had to find alternatives to help promote that. And with that, before Jan speaks, I just want to point out, we've had, we're fortunate, we travel as a group, and we have all, we have a couple more filers here. We have Gary Senical from our, from Eastham, who's our filer there, and then Mary Cody, who is our filer in Sandwich. So, we do, we work together, but we also have a very good, strong cohesive network around us. So thank you.
Just wanted to then bring to your attention the material on that first sheet of the handout. The original, the 160 signatures called upon us to have the effective date no later than September 1st, 2021. In the original that we had had at the last town meeting, we had a 2020 date. So it was postponed first until September 1st, 2021. Now, this morning, at the Recycling Committee, Mary Vilbon from the Chamber of Commerce said, well, the vendor contracts that we need to renegotiate are up September 15th. So we instead now are asking for that to be September 15th, 2021. That will give really two years to go through this process of implementation. The second paragraph that will be another amendment on the floor, and will, we have communicated with Dan Horgan about it, is that effective January 2022, the purchase or sale of beverages in the, would be prohibited in the school buildings owned by the town of Yarmouth, and at any events sponsored by the town of Yarmouth. So that would be the reason for that, is because that already is in the Dennis agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct. Dennis is actually putting it through, and I can, perhaps if you have questions, I can talk to you about that.
Yeah, so the 2022 is shown there to be identical to what the, what Dennis has already approved. Just to go then on the back of that sheet, to the supplement on the FAQ that you received, I wanted to explain a little bit more about costs. I have given to Mr. Benvenu, and have other copies here of examples of outdoor water bottle refill stations, and, and indoor water bottle refill station. I have three of them for, for you, if you have any interest. Let me have them here. Three examples. Color copy is expensive. And they show that the cost. Careful. The cost for 10 priority locations identified here would be under, we'll call it $35,000, which is rounded up close to $5,000 from getting 10 times the cost. There are some that are simply bottle refill. There are some there which are bottles plus fountains. There are some that are on the wall of a building. And there are others which can be interior. Now, as Mark Forrest mentioned, in the last time that we met with you, within the buildings, we have, you have the refillable large gallon, multi-gallon jugs. And assuming that, I have just assumed on this, this drafted, first-cut draft budget, that we would have four indoor water stations that would complement those and begin to replace them as time goes on. So let's say that we would head towards September 2021 with this kind of combination with the, at four beaches, two at each of the two golf courses, and then at the former drive-in property in Peter Homer Park. We're assuming that for the festivals, that they, that you, they would be bringing in a truck with, and I don't have a photograph of it unfortunately, which is a multi-spigotated water source for people to get, many people can get, get from it at the same time. And that, I would assume, would be covered by the fee for the festival if they decide that they need to have that, the vendors, that is. But outside of that, the question then is, how would we begin to look at, let's say, $43,000 with, and by the way, as far as annual upkeep, it's basically replacement of the, replacement filters, which are put in, how often?
Depends on utilization rates, but maybe once a year, you might have to put a new filter in.
And it, and the hookup, so that there's, there's added money in there for that. But looking at the sources for funds, so that you don't have any impact on the taxpayer, that's our goal here. Obviously, some of it is from savings, because you're not, you're not buying the pallet of bottled water that you now are purchasing for parks and recreation in the summertime. The cost for recycling, single-stream recycling, according to Robyn Whitehouse, costs $55 per ton in 2016. And now, since China has refused to take on US recycling, the charge is $120 per ton just for plastics, one to seven, without the glass and tin mixed in. The single-stream cost will be more. So that means that it's at least double the cost for the town to be doing recycling. So the less plastics you got, obviously, the more you're saving in that. But beyond that, Pat Armstrong and Motovy talked last week with TAP, the organization sponsoring the app through which you can see what, where your water bottle refills are within any community you're located. And they have, are talking with us now about sponsoring, paying for, two of these outdoor water bottle stations, and it would have, their advertising. Now, this could be, and that would be the advertising for the app. The question is, how many other sponsors might be interested in actually purchasing and locating one of these outside water bottle stations with, with an ad on it? And if that, that, that advertising is acceptable, there would need to be some criteria, of course, for the screening. But also, thinking about grant proposals, there is actually, for schools, there's a whole website on funding for water bottle refill stations. It's crazy, but there is. And there is a list of seven grant makers who want to see kids making that transition. Surprising. Just thinking of this for us, however, thinking about the Cape Cod Commission's mini-grant, which unfortunately, proposal's closed for this year, I believe October 1st, but we could make that next year for a mini-grant. And Cape Cod Foundation is a possibility, Kelly Foundation, and Cape Cod Healthcare, or again, foundations which would have some, some sponsorship process. So clearly, I think that we want to express our commitment, the commitment of the team here, to continue to work with you, if we can do that, if you can, if you would accept this, because I think that there are so many possibilities. I would be happy to work, I've done a lot of grantsmanship, I've raised $52 million in my life. And I'd be happy to work on grant proposals, for example, with you. For community education, we think about sale of reusable water containers with the Yarmouth logo. I love within, within our reach. But grant competition for an educational video about the project involving the Young Voices for Our Planet team, which is directed by a woman in Woods Hole. So here, we're open for questions, and we want to be sure that you realize that we hope that you will be able to support this at town meeting. That is our goal. Tomorrow, I'll be asking the same thing of the Finance Committee. And I want to be, I, I, I think one of the happiest times in my life, because I'm very active with the age-friendly community group, was when I went to the talent show a week ago Friday, and Lisa, who usually has a bottle of water in front of every person, and many more of them stacked on the table, there were no, there was no water on the table. All there were were cans of Coca-Cola and lemon and lime. And I went over and I hugged her, and I said, this is such a surprise, Lisa, because I thought it was going to be so hard for you. I know how you have this container filled with ice and water for people throughout the summer to come in the door. And she said, I really believe in this, and we know that you're coming to talk to us. I'll be there tomorrow. And we decided that we could front-end it and go with it now. And it was, it was very moving for me. I think that that kind of support is extraordinary, really. So, you know, who knows, the train is coming down the track. And I just wanted to comment, I opened up my latest Consumer Reports, and perhaps you get that magazine too. And our biggest article here, the front cover actually, is, should we break our bottled water happen? It's, it's just happening now. And of course, you've all heard my, my Pete Seeger line, just, and I'll finish with that. If it can't be reduced, reused, repaired, rebuilt, refurbished, refinished, resold, recycled, or composted, then it should be restricted, redesigned, or removed from production. That's, we're on our way. And I appreciate your leadership, Motovy. And I appreciate your leadership, Mr. Capri. And thank you very much, Pat, for your assistance. Thank you. And the others that we visited with. Is there anything that we can answer here? No?
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
I have one on the language. The purchase by the town of Yarmouth of either water or any other beverage in single-use plastic bottles of any size is prohibited, and the sale of the same is prohibited on town property. Does that mean that the town of Yarmouth is prohibited from purchasing and selling?
Yes.
Or anyone is purchased, is prohibited from selling on town property?
May I, may I read this? It, it says, just for those that are in the audience, the second part of the sentence is, and the sale of water or any beverage in single-use plastic containers is prohibited on town property. Any vendor selling water or any other beverage on town property would be prohibited from doing so. And the reason why the word "sale" is there, as opposed to dispensing, which was in the original language, was because you have oversight on contracts with vendors, but you can't really have oversight on who dispenses what. It becomes a much more pervasive word, in a sense.
Users clearly bring whatever they want to and use whatever they want to. That's their, it's the issue of sale.
So there are some facilities that aren't listed here, and are run by independent organizations, such as Little League fields, high school football fields, Whitey Red Sox field. How do you propose to regulate them?
Those would be town property?
Correct. That's why I'm asking.
And so that would be a vendor relationship that you would have. You would have to tell them that it's prohibited to sell anything in a single-use plastic bottle, or a beverage cannot be sold in single-use plastic containers. There are alternatives to this market, so there are plenty of alternatives to look at.
Stay on the alternatives. Thank you.
Mr. Toley?
Yes.
I, I believe that the Dennis Yarmouth High School is situated on land that is not owned by the town of Yarmouth. It's the only building and land that's owned by the school district.
Of which we are 70% stakeholders, so I consider that town property?
I, yes, sir.
Was it how it was interpreted that I understand your interpretation? Thank you all.
To follow up with a question that Eric raises. Because of the relative expansiveness of town facilities in terms of indoor facilities, outdoor fields, playing fields, who enforces this?
The town would enforce its own policy.
But who? Who in the town's going to go around checking on what kind of water bottles people are drinking?
Well, it's not a question of what water bottles people are drinking out of. So if you've purchased your water bottles out of your own pocket, then you would be able to purchase them if you purchase them.
How are we going to know that? I'm walking along.
Well, let me, may I answer, answer your question?
I'm walking across the baseball field with a water bottle, right? So how do you know whether I bought that from somebody that's sponsoring the baseball game, or whether I brought it myself?
If you have town vendors, you typically should have town vendor contracts that would... If you have town vendors, you typically should have town vendor contracts that were written by the town to allow a person to have space on your town property. On those contracts, you would have oversight with regard to saying, stipulating very clearly that nothing would be sold in a plastic container or plastic bottle. When it comes to your own town procurement through your own town facilities, you would have oversight on that by saying that you would not allow the purchase of any town item in a single-use plastic bottles. I'll ask the town administrator to actually answer that question, because do you not issue contracts for vending relationships, and do you not determine your own procurement policies?
We would, we've already reached out to the vendors that provide that type of commodity to our residents and visitors, and we're working up a strategy to address that going forward. So I think the issue really becomes, the contracts will not allow vendors to to do that, and we won't procure any single-use plastic. If somebody were to be walking on a field, I suppose, I, it's more of a role of, I don't know, like, much like enforcement related to smoking on public property. If somebody sees it, they make a complaint, you know, it'll eventually be handled somewhere in my office, or at the police department, or at the health department. But I don't think we're going to be running into a huge amount of trouble, because our issue is, we're not going to be selling it on town property. But if somebody walks onto the beach or with bottles of water of their own, I mean, that's, we're not looking for that trouble, you know? So it has some, you know, nuances to work out, but, you know, we are confident in our own procurement that we will not be selling it.
But I think it extends just beyond procurement, because you have these youth groups that have tournaments and various activities like that that generally sell all kinds of stuff.
So on our town use of property forms, it'll have language that indicate that, you know, town property, this is a prohibition, and you would not be allowed to do that. We would take that up with those organizations directly.
Did anybody talk to the Little League group?
I'd have, I'd defer that to Pat.
I guess the question is, has anyone talked to the youth groups about this, including the Little League group?
Jen, don't move.
The light moves much easier. It's still there. I'm nervous, I'm tripping on that.
I know. That's why I'm asking you not to move. Products are not sold on the town property for groups such as soccer, or basketball, or those groups. Little League does have a concession stand, and Little League, it receives free usage of those two fields and that on a ninety-nine-year lease. And if this passed, we would have to ask Little League not to sell plastic bottles from their concession stand. Now, I was under the impression, and so I can't give you a straight answer at the moment about youth football and the concession stand for the YD Red Sox were on school property and such, I told the committee that as school property, even though we're seventy percent of owners of it, it wasn't a town property, thus it was not included within this bylaw. That's our thinking. That's how we were going forward. And I might have misspoke, but that's what I was always told, that the schools, the high school was owned by the district, and the rest were on property and owned by the towns.
But they have an article here that's amending.
To 2022. So it would, yeah, so that would be plenty of time to inform.
School property.
Right. They're all owned. It's, but that's why the school piece was pushed out as well, to give the school district and Rooney and and the nutrition supervisor, so two years to say. And right now, actually, a lot of our vendors are preparing for this, because it's happening not just on the Cape, but throughout the state. So U.S. Foods and a number of the other vendors in town, I mean, that supply to local communities are preparing with aluminum-canned water and paper-boxed water, and just as they're providing bamboo utensils instead of plastic utensils. So this move is is known to people who work in this industry, and there are alternatives that are being created to address this need.
Can I just ask you one question while you're there? It says, "Savings if no longer purchased bottled water handed out for rec activities." Do we actually hand out free bottles of water?
Mostly to our staff on the hot days. We, and we provide water at camp when it's hot. We have a couple of bubblers, and the kids all are asked to buy, bring bottles, but, you know, they lease them.
Bottled water at this point?
We do on very hot days. If a child comes up and wants a glass of, a bottle of water, we had some available at camp, but it's not something we want to pay for or do. And we have two bubblers out there that they should be able to utilize. And there's four existing bubblers at the moment in town that are functional, that could be used for this purpose. Besides the information that Dr. Hyvey already gave you, I went today to our provider of bubblers, I love that word, bubblers, and on the, called Most Dependable Bubbler. It comes out of Tennessee. I called them today and talked about this issue with them, and they have freestanding bottle fillers that are towers that could go to the ground and or be attached to the outside, say, of the concessions at the beaches or the restrooms. And getting ten shipped from Tennessee, all-inclusive, and having money for installation would be closer to twenty thousand dollars than thirty-five. So the funding would be less if we bought in bulk for the first ten.
Are they connected to a water supply?
Well, the buildings certainly have water supplies at all the beaches. And Flax has it. What was on your list? I'm sorry, Jen, I don't have.
Zeego, Parker's River, Gray's Beach.
Right. So we've got a couple that, at the golf courses right now, we use coolers with big things of ice. Thank you. And we have an irrigation system and water supplies out there, so we could put them out there close by where we already put the coolers. At the beaches, we all have the restrooms, which all have waters, water to them. And in the former drive-in property, there is water at the property. I'm not sure where we would put this based on parking and the setup. That was, and then at Peter Palmer Park, we have one bubbler functioning already, but we would put in a second one over by the basketball courts, because that group is a big group that goes and buys Gatorade and other water at some of the convenience stores adjacent to the park. So we would want to make sure that the water filler was conveniently located to encourage them to utilize that and not bring in bottles of water.
What are our obligations with regard to testing of those water dispensing?
You know, we've never had to, and and there wasn't a policy in place. We do have filters. We do flush out the water bubblers every year. That the four that we have, we have one at six A at the town green. We have one down, again, at Homer Park, and.
No, I understand, Pat.
And they all have filters, so we would return, we don't have a policy of testing them, Norm. Was that the question?
Yes.
We do not.
Because I, I know, I certainly will not consume water on the golf course dispensed from something that is in the irrigation system. I'm not going to do that. That's a health risk I would not assume.
We we have water sources out there that we could pipe. I would not take it off of gray water or the irrigation. But I'm saying there's water lines out there that I believe that we would have the ability to provide water close by for where those turns are where water is presently available.
I mean, right now, there's water provided on the golf courses and and containers with, you know, plastic, not plastic, with.
Paper cups.
Cups. So, you know, I would think that if we're going to continue that, that's perfectly acceptable. But installing additional water sources without monitoring those sources seems to me to be irresponsible.
May I answer that question? The, if you were going to provide municipal drinking water, it would automatically be under the oversight of your water department, because we're, municipal drinking water, once it becomes something that's drinking water, if you're putting it in a situation where people are going to be able to take it, it's covered under the Safe Drinking Water Act.
Thank you for that response, but the water department does not monitor the water coming out of my faucet. Now, now, listen. You know, the dispensing of the water is entirely different than, we're talking about the cleanliness of the dispensers and the ongoing maintenance of those dispensers to make sure that that they are are of an acceptable quality for public consumption. We have a responsibility to make sure that happens.
And we would tap in.
There are, there are costs associated with that.
Yes. There would, there would be filters, as there are, on the others that are changed out annually. And they would tap into the public water line, which is the tested and monitored wine that that the town does. And these are bottle filling dispensers, so they're not drinking fountains. So it's not a fountain that a child would put their lips on, and then you would fill your bottle from. These are above-filling, small socket fillers.
I'm familiar with them.
All right. I'm just trying to be clear, so that, you know, that concern of cleanliness, I understand, but I'm just, we're trying to be as reasonable as possible to help.
Okay. You know, we have, obviously, got other issues, for example, at Bass River with all the other materials that are out there. I know personally, if I, if I put my hand on a dispenser at Bass River, that'll be contaminated with fecal matter from, from geese. And so, you know, there are issues out there that are not recognized at this point in this, in this presentation. I do have other questions, however. The water, the estimate of cost, and you've done a good job, don't, don't misconstrue my questions. You've done a good job. You've done a lot of homework in between since town meeting, and I think you've done that very effectively. But the thirty-five thousand dollars, is that for the purchase of the water filling stations?
Purchase, installation, upkeep.
Not upkeep. Twenty thousand at this point to purchase and ship ten of the most expensive ones, we might choose not to use those, from Tennessee to here. And then the installation will based, will be based on if it's going to be freestanding, or if it's going to be attached to a building, if it's exterior, or if it's interior. The ten listed in front of you have some building mounts available and some pedestals. So the money that we save by buying a cheaper product, I mean, a less expensive filler that attaches to a building would save us five hundred to seven hundred dollars, which would cover the cost for installation, sir.
Okay. So the thirty-five thousand dollars does include installation?
Thirty-five, yeah, the thirty-five thousand dollars was a quote the ladies had to present to you today from Sustainable Practices. I did some work this afternoon and got that cost down to twenty. So I want to be clear. It's not thirty-five anymore for ten. We got the cost down to twenty thousand dollars.
So what happens in the winter with those dispensing stations?
We flush them out and winterize them like we do the restrooms in all our public buildings that have no heat.
Okay.
They're designed to be outside in the winter.
So so there's some, some costs associated with the labor and maintenance?
Blowing them out. Yes, sir.
Okay. I had the same question that Tracy had with regard to the school systems. I believe, if I'm correct, the district owns the land that the school systems are on, on Station Avenue.
Yes.
On Station, yeah. On Station Avenue.
That's correct. That's the high school. That's why I always had that misunderstanding.
Right. Okay. So so I assume you're working with the district then with regard to? And they own the high school then, too? Right.
And that will be from 2022, so there is time for them to work on that for two years.
Is there any additional impact in terms of loss of revenue or loss of profits on the sale of water?
In the present format, there would be a loss of revenue if the supplies were traded off with new cans and cartons that cost more than the present water or beverages are being sold. So say if I'm buying a bottle of water now in a plastic single-use, and it's costing the town at the golf course, because I know your golf is focused, okay, ten cents to buy that bottle, and I sell it for a dollar fifty. So if, moving forward, the town continues to run those concessions, and we can't find a comparable product, not in a single-use plastic, for that same cost, if it's higher cost, then we have two choices of raising the cost of the water or to lose our profitability. If by chance the town decides to privatize those two concessions in the golf courses, then it would not be an impact to the town at all, because it would be the vendor's impact, not ours.
Okay. All right. In in getting that, you know, I think Mike raised a question about enforceability. And and there's, you know, this does not contain any language with regard to penalties.
Nor should it.
Okay.
Nor has it been in any other community, as Concord has done this, and Lexington, and others off Cape, and of the new ones that are here. It's not about enforceability, it's about social change.
All right. Okay.
We're not looking to make money and enforce people to do things, it's to see a social change, not we, the group.
Okay. I think those are the questions I had.
Can I finish my questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Tracy.
The school piece, you said that you're gonna, so you have a bunch of amendments already to this, and I'm wondering how that works with the petition article, because often it changes the article, and as you've said, you had a hundred and sixty people sign what they believed were going to be the article, and now it's changed. So has there been a conversation with?
This is the first I heard of that, so we'll work on that with the moderator.
So Dan Horgan can't dictate whether or not, I mean, he can.
That's a very good question.
It needs to go through.
The date, the date, I think, was acceptable to Dan Horgan, but the other paragraph has not been reviewed with him.
It's, but he doesn't, he doesn't determine whether or not it's legal or not. So when you're changing the context of a petition article from what people have already signed, sometimes it's allowed by law, and sometimes it's not, based on whether or not it's, you know, obviously, it's in the spirit of it, but whether or not it's more restrictive or whatever. So that needs to be reviewed.
May I comment? This one, since it's not restricted, it actually expands the scope, which is very similar to what we did last year, unfortunately, not last year, but in the spring. It became more definitive with regard to the change in the language. There should be no issue with this, because it just expands the scope to the, the guard of the schools, and expands the date in terms of complaints.
Expanding it is changing the scope.
I mean, but expansive of the scope being not making it more restrictive in terms of the focus.
You are making it more restrictive by expanding it.
Well, I'll leave it to your legal counsel to review.
That's what I'm telling you. Because you're adding something to it that's putting more restrictions on it. That's my opinion. You know, I'm going to say the same thing I said the last time you were here. I think your intentions are very well-intended, and I would love to see people on their own change their behaviors with regard to recycling and plastics. I do, I am concerned that, you know, the the mentality that we're going to reduce recycling from doing this is false, because people are just going to go next door and buy it and bring it with them. So, you know, I really feel like it's an undue or unneeded burden to the town specifically, because you're not saying, "Don't buy plastic." You're just saying, "Don't buy it from us." So that, that's my personal opinion. Obviously, it's going to go to the townspeople, and they will have their own opinion on that, and they can decide. So I appreciate all your work on this. I think, like I said, your efforts are very well-intended. I totally see what you're trying to do, what we're all trying to accomplish together. We should be doing it through education and changing people's behaviors, but to me, this does not achieve, achieve that, in my mind.
Anyone else?
I did want to be sure that for the people from the public safety do realize that there are the exceptions that are in this bylaw proposal. Any town department, when engaged in public health and safety operations, shall be exempt from this bylaw. And in the event of a declaration by the emergency management director or other duly-authorized town commonwealth or U.S. official of an emergency affecting the availability and/or quality of drinking water for Yarmouth residents, the town should be exempt from this bylaw until seven calendar days after such declaration has ended. And I did want to be sure that you realize that that was part of this.
Oh, and just one more point. If any town departments are handing out water for free in bottles, I think that that's something that we should lead on and discontinue doing. I don't, I don't think the town should be handing out bottled water. We should find ways to dispense it in other ways.
Well, I I pretty much agree with Tracy. I am supportive of your effort. I don't think that it's going to achieve what it sets out to do. I think that people, when they go to the beaches, when they go to the soccer tournaments, when they go to the baseball games, they're going to bring this stuff that they're going to get from some other place. I do think that there should be an education effort, and I think there should be these other fountains, if you will, to let people avail themselves of of water without buying single-use plastic.
of, of water without buying single-use plastic containers. But I think they're going to get it from some other source. I don't believe it's going to cut down on the amount of bottled water that's consumed in the town of Yarmouth by any measure. I, I think it's basically a symbolic gesture.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one last comment to you? There are two components to this that I'd like you to take into consideration. This is not looking at elimination of plastic. We're actually asking you to be part of that educational component. Because as a town leadership and one that's dependent upon tax dollars for the budgetary implementation that you put in place, you can be part of the educational component that you speak of, number one. Number two, this is not looking at necessarily a displacement of all plastic as a result of just the boycotting of town-sponsored activities or town purchase of these plastic bottles. But it's looking at, yes, you will probably find some savings, but the one element we're not talking about, the one element that I think is part of this educational component that's extremely important, is when you make this stand, which I'm still hoping you will, regardless of what your comments have been thus far, you're also taking into consideration the costs that we're not thinking about every time we buy a plastic bottle. And that's a huge educational component, the fact that it is a petroleum-based product, that it does have health consequences, that will never biodegrade. Even if it's sold for 10 cents, its actual price is probably worth more like $50, so people would buy much less of it if it was priced appropriately. We're asking you to lead by example, but also be the educational vehicle that will help us. Without one step forward, you can't have the other steps fall in place. We need leadership on this issue that's visible and our town governments can offer that. So please don't think beyond the scope of what we're asking. What we're asking is something quite simple. We're asking you to take that first step so that the rest of the community can follow suit. We have a few other towns that have already engaged us in this effort and we're very confident that we'll have a few others that will join us at the end of fall meeting. We'll easily have a simple majority of Cape towns that will buy into this. But we really need you. We really do. And it is time to be a leader on an issue and right now, you still have an opportunity to be a leader. Eventually, you'll just be pulled along. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I, I'm grappling with this issue in terms of what our position should be. You know, I, I think we're a small player in this and, and, but nonetheless, I guess if, you know, I think about analogous situations, if we were selling cigarettes here in, in the town offices or in our public buildings, at this point, we certainly would have taken steps to eliminate that. And, you know, because, you know, I think we've certainly proven beyond a doubt that, that cigarettes contribute to poor public health. And I think plastics do ultimately contribute to, to poor public health and, and so, you know, we've got to start someplace. I think you've done a, I think, a commendable job in, in the intervening time period of, of moving us forward on this and, and I think it's, it's probably going to be clunky, no matter what, throughout the Cape and, and here in Yarmouth in the implementation of this. But, you know, frankly, at this point, I support what you're doing and I appreciate the effort that's gone into it. And, you know, six months ago, I wouldn't have said that, but.
That means a lot to me because I remember six months ago.
I'll forget my plastic bottle next time.
Thank you.
Mark? Now, I, I would like to echo Norm's comments. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. The first time we started talking about this, we had a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, a lot of issues. And you've addressed most of them, if not all of them, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm glad that you've had the opportunity to work with town staff and to look at the implications of this, how it will work. And the fact is, is that making a transition does involve a cost. By changing behavior, by doing things differently, it does require some, some funding to, to, to adapt. And that's really what we're doing here is we're changing behavior, we're adapting. But it would appear to me that we're doing it fully cognizant of what all these changes represent and what they all mean. I get the impression, and I don't want to put words in Pat Armstrong's mouth, but I, I get the impression that, you know, we've looked at this from a variety of angles and it would appear to me, based on what I'm hearing, tell me if I'm wrong, but that this is a, this is, this is something that we can adapt to and this is something that we can accommodate and make work. Is that, is that, am I being overly simplistic? Am I putting?
No, that's what we've, since the directive that was given to us at the spring, we've worked with the group to.
Who gave you that directive?
I think that was the consensus of the audience and the board is to work on, would the group a palatable solution to this situation.
That was certainly the impression that I got from town meeting is that can we work together to come up with a consensus approach? And I'm, I get the impression that we're there.
My job was not to make it pass. It was to make sure they knew all of the rules to get to where they need to go.
If I could also add, it sounds like we've identified costs. And I want to applaud you for actively wanting to take a role in helping figuring out how to fund these added costs. I think that's terrific. You've mobilized all this energy. You've got all these people involved in this. I think that will be helpful in terms of raising some of the funds that will be necessary to make some of these, these changes and some of these accommodations. You know, I was at Barnstable High School over the weekend and I couldn't help but notice all throughout the high school, water dispensing stations. You know, I remember when I was a kid and I went to school, the last place I'd want to get a drink of water was the bubbler, you know, or the, because God only knows what was there, what was going on or how even clean the water is. And, and, but to see in, in that school, these water dispensing operations all throughout the building, I thought was impressive. And I think it reflects what is indeed a change that's unfolding and something that I think we should find ways to embrace and make work. So I'm glad we're at the point that we're at right now. So I appreciate all your work, all your hard effort. I like Norm. I'll, I'll be supportive of this, assuming that our recycle, I mean, I'm always interested in hearing what our other committees have to say. I don't know where our recycling committee is or the other committees that have been working on this, but I generally defer until I give them a chance to, so to speak. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where they're at, but I'm going to be interested in hearing their.
The recycling committee met this morning, but did not have a quorum and they will be trying to find a quorum to meet again between now and town meeting. And I think that, just like every one of the others of us, community education means that we've gotten educated too, you know? And that's, I think that every, every, everyone we've touched with this is a, you know, can feel the light dawning. And it's a good, good thing.
It is. It's very, very good. So thank you once again.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to sit in the middle?
I don't know. I can see changes are coming to the website.
Yeah.
Don't they look nice?
Yeah.
You mean, you haven't been on there to see it yourself, Mark?
Oh, I have. I have. I have. I just wanted to note it for anybody else that might know it. It's still, a lot of kink's still being worked out, though.
It's a work in progress.
It's a step. I like the calendar section. Why don't you scroll to the calendar, Kyle? Check that out. There you go. It's very readable. So if I want to know what's going on this week, which meetings I'm going to go to or watch, it's all right there. That's good.
So let the record reflect that Mark has seen the calendar section.
Yeah, yeah. Duly noted.
Probably the only thing you looked at. Okay. Karen?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen Green. I'm the Community Development Director and I'm pleased to do a kind of online presentation to introduce you to our new permitting guide for businesses. This was truly a collaborative effort led by Community Development, Kathy and Kyle, and our friend Mark Grills from the Building Department Inspection Services, with a lot of input from all the way across town, Fire Department, Health Department, so forth and so on. So I don't really want to leave anyone out. The guide is intended to provide a general overview of the permitting process. What we were trying to do is answer the most questions that the most people have, not answering every question that anybody might have. We do provide a lot of information in the guide. It's intended to be used online. We are not planning to print anything. The reason we're making it available online is we have a lot of hyperlinks in there that bring you to very useful information, either who you should contact about something or a form that you should fill out or where the rules are that govern what it is you're trying to do. We're planning to add to the guide over time, build on it and try to make some of the links a little bit more lively. If there's areas where information hasn't been included online yet, like a form or an application, we're planning to identify those and make them more usable. We hope that everybody finds this helpful in expanding or starting your businesses in Yarmouth. We can come back to it. The second page that was, before I walk through the guide, second page that was in the handout is actually a letter that we took liberty of drafting from the Board of Selectmen. And if you like it and see fit, we can throw it online and include it as part of the guide. I thought, we thought that it was important for the selectmen to indicate their, their support for our business community and people looking to open up a, a new business. So, do you want to come back to the letter? Or?
Yeah, I read the letter. I think it's fine, but it, we can come back to it to get other comments.
Okay. Sounds good. So Kyle's going to scroll through for me. We have a table of contents that he zoomed past. And then just a, a brief introduction to call out who's the guide for. It's, it's for all the businesses and even, I think homeowners may find it helpful. We have a brief summary of places to go, people to know, just listing out kind of a who's who in which department. Everyone has a phone number. Everyone has an email address. And then we really get into process and things that you need to do in order to open up a business in town. One of the first is a business certificate. You can see anything in the online version. It's, it's just like usual. Anything with an underline is a hyperlink that will bring you somewhere else. So here's the application for a business certificate. It's right there online. Going back to zoning, there, there you are. You're quick. We have, I think, things that people are in general very familiar with, the zoning bylaw, the zoning map. We also have, though, links to some summary-type information, the incentive-based business overlay districts. So this is something kind of people in the know know about, the hotel-motel overlay district, the village centers overlay district, the things that we're so used to calling out by acronym all the time. But this is a nice little description that might provide additional information to someone who is otherwise unaware. So it just describes the zoning bylaw, gets into project review. So what are the steps to having your project reviewed? The first is design review and it has the, the rules and regulations. And a lot of this is repetitive. I think that we've done a pretty good job of keeping consistent each of the sections. So the rules and regulations and then the contact information for design review. In this case, it's Kathy and you have her phone number and her email address. In the planning, the site plan review team, excuse me, it's Mark Grills, same type of information, rules and regulations. So that's kind of how to navigate zoning. If you can't navigate the zoning on your own or do it by right, then we move to the next section, which is zoning relief. And you have two different entities that provide zoning relief. We have the zoning Board of Appeals. In that section, you can just click on the link and you end up going to the webpage where there is information on the application. The application's there, the schedule's there for when are the hearings coming up, when are the filing deadlines, really very helpful information. Planning board, same type of thing. It just outlines the planning board website, again, the contact. We scroll down and we get to the building department. Building department, it's just a good reminder, a lot of people think Mark is just about zoning and he's not. He's also all about the building code. And it's got important links that provide you to that information. Under application, there's something that people don't always know about. That's the link in online services and that brings you right to Acela or almost right to Acela. You just scroll down a little bit and click under permits and licenses. And that's where you can start your permit process online if you like. You're also welcome to come to the town hall and interface with staff, but that link is there. Just thinking out loud, when I reread this over and over, I really do realize how much information we have online. And I think that what's nice about this online permitting tool is it collates all that information, puts it in one place so that people, it, it's easier to look for. You still have to look a little bit, but it's real easy to find. If we go back to the main part, we keep going through other divisions that are involved with the permit process. The Fire Department is very important. They're one of our participants in site plan review, as is the Health Department. In the narrative, for someone who might not know, we've tried to include the information on what areas of rules and regulations are governed by this particular entity. In this case, for the Health Department, you know, it's, it's important, you know you're going to talk to the Health Department if you're opening up a restaurant. In this case, you also know if you have a camp or a tanning establishment or some other kind of very specific things, you're going to be dealing with the Health Department as well. Licensing is not necessarily part of a, a building permit, but it's absolutely an important component to the town's business inventory. So we have information from the licensing division. You're going to visit the licensing division for liquor establishments, entertainment or amusements. Those are things that you all are very familiar with because they also come here. We have information on conservation, again, contact information as well as the website. The website has links to application materials, filing deadlines, the wetland bylaw, for instance. We've also included information that's not always used, but it's sometimes used. The Old Kings Highway Regional Historic District is important for businesses to be aware of. That applies to any property north of the Mid-Cape Highway or Route 6. Historical Commission would, is mentioned. They would have, in general, we don't see them very involved in businesses, but if you were to look to open a business in a historical building or want to make changes to that building, they could come into play. Finally, not finally, but second to finally, and this was a kind of a more recent product that we've been able to work on with additional staff, we have other resources that might be helpful for a business. And these are generally links, one of the links there, the South Yarmouth Opportunity Zone, that's an internal link where we've also compiled some other information relative to opportunity zones. The other links are generally external links to state agencies that provide some type of incentive for business. Last, we give a couple of examples and these are just frequently asked questions. So this is really kind of a quick and dirty, if you were going to open up a retail store or an office, these are things that you need to think about. It gives you a list of what your required permits or approval your required permits or approvals would be, and then it gives you kind of a quick and dirty list of questions that help you to understand how the rules and regulations may apply. And in turn, that will tell you where to go to ask your questions. So we have the FAQ for the retail store or office, and then an FAQ for opening a restaurant. That's about it. It's a live document. I think that we are able to keep working on it and make improvements where we can. I think it's important to keep updating the information that we have online, and making things consistent when you look across the divisions, so that you know what an application link is going to look like, whether you're in the building department, the Fire Department, or wherever you are. Anything to add?
Okay, questions or comments from the board?
I mean, I think this is great. I commend you all on the time and effort that went into this. I hope that you'll also do one for homeowners.[677.12][677.12](laughter) Because, you know, working on a residence can be as daunting for a homeowner who doesn't know the process as working on a business can be for a business owner. So I would hope that you would seriously consider that. So as great as I think this is, let me play devil's advocate from someone who is going online and looking for this, at this for the first time. I see 18 pages of obstacles. So I wonder how, or if we need to, make it look less like a list of obstacles. And I'm wondering if, you know, if there is, I don't see anywhere that there is an actual guide, well, I see, how do I obtain a permit? I'm looking more of a how-to guide, of how to navigate the process. You know, I understand that these are all the boards and committees and commissions and departments that I may have to go through, but oftentimes when I encounter people, not just in this town, in any town, it's kind of, you remember in high school algebra, the order of operations? Who do I go to first? Some towns are very specific as to, you can't file for zoning until you have conservation approval and order of conditions. And you can't file with the Board of Health until you have your zoning approval. So I guess if I were to make a recommendation to kind of expand this, maybe it's a walkthrough for, you know, a typical scenario. You know, John Q. Public wants to open a restaurant, and this, these are the steps in order that they might need to take, and this is similar to how they might experience the process.
Like an outline, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is great, but, you know, I don't see it, I see it as telling me all the things that I might encounter along the way, but I don't see it as really telling me. And I know Mark is good with that, sitting with people and kind of outlining the process for him, but maybe one improve, if I had an improvement, that would be my one suggestion, would be to kind of, a guide as to how to navigate all of these things, what things come before others, and the order in which you might expect to encounter these different departments, or, I don't want to keep using the word obstacles, but milestones, or my-
Steps.
Right.
Congratulations.
So, something a little along, along the line of navigating this, might be a helpful addition.
Okay, I think that's a good suggestion.
That's all I have.
I completely agree. That was exactly my thoughts, because I think that that's, you know, you never know what you're supposed to do first, who you're supposed to see. Oftentimes, it's different for each scenario, which makes it even more difficult to provide an outline, but I do think it's important. I'm happy to hear that it's a living document, because there's a lot of information here that changes, personnel. But there's nothing in here about what triggers a Cape Cod Commission review. Not that I want to add another level.
Obstacle.
Yeah, and it does appear that way, but it, and it's not. I think that this-
If you're that level of a developer, I think this is more for the smaller type of business owner, and not necessarily a larger developer.
Well, how would I know that? It's a business permitting guide.
It says, and who is this guide for, and also in the places to go and people to know. I agree with you. There are like three main departments that help you in the town, and that's noting that staff's very happy to assist with the process. And there's several key departments and staff you need to visit, and it's building, health, and community development. And I think we help guide people, depending on the complexity of their project.
So it's a small business guide? Is that what you're saying? It's not a business, it's a small business guide?
If you want to call it a small business guide, it depends on what, you know, is a, you know, 130-seat restaurant a small business, but it's not necessarily meant to be an all-encompassing for such a large project that's like a DRI level. So if you want to call it small, we can do that.
Well, I think you need to tell, if you're going to make it a guide, I think you should give them the information that they need to know. And I like the hyperlinks to it. I mean, in a perfect world, somebody could be able to do this from their home and not have to come here and interact. So I think that kind of, all the information that you can put there, that's what the purpose of this is for.
Okay.
I'm done.
I think it's a great move forward. I, you know, I think, I've felt for a long time that the permitting process, zoning regulations really needed simplification. Without that, I mean, this certainly makes it easier for someone to navigate through the needs of the town and their needs, in order to open a business, or make changes to a business, and so forth. So to be, you know, you do have the examples of the retail and the restaurant, which are going to be the most common things that people are going to be doing in town. So I think you've hit a lot of the major users of, or needs. Maybe adding a bubble diagram, you know, with what do I do first, you know, the bubble approach in terms of what a person needs, or a business needs to do with the things that you've got already in your retail section, in the restaurant section, but in a visual bubble chart.
Flow chart or something?
Flow chart, yeah. It's, that's right. But it's, you know, each major area has a bubble, and then, okay, if this, then that, you know, so that, so that people can kind of follow that through visually, as opposed to reading, you know, a list of steps. So that's just a suggestion. There may be other ways to better communicate that, but that's one way.
Excuse me.
Mark?
There you go. Yeah, I totally endorse the bubble chart idea, flow chart. And, no, I think this, I think this is, it's, we've been talking about this for a while, right? How many years? Yeah, it'd be nice to get something. Kyle, this must have everything to do with your new arrival here on the, on the scene. So congratulations. No, I do think that people generally need something readable and in English that helps explain how to get through the permitting process. I'm looking at this, and that's exactly what Norm had raised, is exactly what I'm thinking, is sequentially, how do these things fit? Do I do this review before that review? How do they sort of tie together? I think that's the, that's the only thing that's missing. Otherwise, I think it's good.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything new to add to the comments that have been made thus far. I'd just like to say thank you for your hard work. I think this is a great consolidation and organization of stuff that is, appears in other places on the, on the website, and maybe, as Eric suggested, it could be navigated a little bit better. I want to take the frequently asked questions and use that as kind of a springboard to develop a little outline from that. You know, if you're going to do a restaurant, these are most likely the steps you have to take. If you're going to do a motel, these are most likely, it would be the same information. It'd be a little redundant, but you'd get it early on, so you could probably hone in on the right boards and departments. But to have all this information in one place, all the contact information, it's great. So thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. You like the letter?
I like the letter.
Okay, we'll put it in the letter.
Is anyone else have any comments on the letter?
We'll need your signature, Mike.
Yeah, there aren't any mistakes. That's why I'll go out and I'll run that one. It's, it's a letter perfect.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Town Generated CPA Projects is next.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Keeping with the board's request from a couple of years ago, any CPA-related project that town departments or committees had generated, we're bringing them for you early on in the process to have you have an opportunity to have some commentary on
I was wondering where the, where the details were. Here they are.
So if I may begin, I'm Michael Berry. I'm the Community Preservation Act Coordinator in the Community Development Office. What I provided to you was a number of documents that we can go over as quickly or as in-depth as you like. The first one is the public announcement that we put out at the end of August, telling people how much was available in the CPA reserve funds. And you'll notice that there are different funds for the different areas. So we have a housing reserve, historic reserve, open space reserve, and an unrestricted reserve, which can be used for any of the previous ones, as well as for recreation. So we have about $2.5 million in existing reserves. This does not include any anticipated revenues that would begin in July of the next year. So that's kind of your starting point, what's available. Next is a memo that we put together that lays out the new applications that came in as of this past Friday, which was the closing date for applications. And we received 12 of them, and they total about $3.4 million. Plus, there's an unknown one, which is a possible land acquisition project, which would be additional funds, but that is not known at this point. So 3.4 plus the additional, and we have 2.5 available. So the process has been every year. In the fall, we take applications, early October. The Community Preservation Committee goes through those applications in the fall, and deliberates until about Christmas time, and then makes their recommendations. Those are provided into the town meeting warrant for the spring. So I thought I would go over each of the town-sponsored applications that came in. So we have six of those of the 12, with one that is a privately sponsored application that would require some town participation. So that would be number seven. We can go over these seven very quickly, if you like. So the first one is a housing project. I'm, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is the Archaeological Survey. This comes from the Yarmouth Historic Commission. It is to attempt to create a survey of archaeologically sensitive sites around Yarmouth. And typically, these include a 50- to 100-page report about the likelihood of archaeological sites around town, field surveys, where teams would go out and walk different areas. And these recommendations would also come with some management practices on how to potentially manage these sites over time. They would give good insight to the town on when it's doing construction projects and things like that, whether it's doing in an area that could be sensitive to historic archaeological activities. The next one is the annual deposit to the housing trust. I'm sure this one is very well-known to you all, but recent highlights are Yarmouth Commons, where about $2 million in CPA funds leverage an additional $12 million, state, federal, and tax credits, things like that. Similarly, we've got Yarmouth Gardens coming up in West Yarmouth. This will be an additional 40 units, and about $1.2 million in CPA funds has leveraged about $9.9 million in subsidies and tax credits. The trust does many things, but those are a couple of the highlights. The next one is an open space from the Open Space Committee, and we have representatives on all these projects to answer any of your specific questions. This is a rather unique one, in that it spans three of the four areas for CPA funding, so open space, housing, and recreation. So there is a home at 75 Meadowbrook Road in West Yarmouth. It's on Swan Pond, which is fed by Parker's River. A third of the property is marshland. There was a building there, a small ranch. The proposal would be to move this building to a site about a half a mile away, closer to Winslow Gray Road, and make that building available as affordable housing for a veteran in his family, in his or her family. The site itself would be made into open space and conservation with a conservation restriction on it. So it's a bit of a complicated project, but it is hitting many areas of interest for the town. The next project is a DPW project. This is Sandy Pond Recreation Area. This would be Phase 1 of the new construction efforts at Sandy Pond. This effort would be creating a splash pad, and also making improvements to parking in the driveway area, and some other site improvements as well. That one is $1,060,000, and that is Phase 1. Next, similarly, another DPW project, and this is to replace, repair the backstop of one of the fields in the Little League complex over across the road there, the John Simpkins area. This backstop is in serious need of repair and replacement, and it's in response to local residents who are having problems, because the backstop is not keeping the balls on the field. Next, we have a project for the Riverwalk Park and Boardwalk Loop at the old drive-in site. This ask is for $1.5 million. So the total estimated cost was $6.7 million. Last year, town meeting, voters approved $2.2 million. That was to do the permitting and design work, and about 25% of the construction. This additional $1.5 would be for construction work as well. And it's also vitally needed to attract the matching funds that would be available through state and other agencies. So without an additional town commitment, it would be hard to get additional matching funds. The last one is the one that's kind of the public-private partnership. It's at Ancient Cemetery. It's the Historical Society of Old Yarmouth, looking to continue the program of cleaning the ancient gravestones. So this would be largely done by volunteers. Funding would be done for training, for supplies, things like that. We see an area where DPW and the cemetery's department would have to work with them, particularly maybe in rewriting some of the stones and putting them upright, things like that. So those are the projects. Also on that overview, the list of other projects that were not town-sponsored, but those private projects are listed as well for you. And if you have any questions, we're ready to take those, and we're ready to bring up people who have specific answers.
Comments or questions from the board on the town-sponsored projects?
Are we going to be getting the more DP, the more detailed CPC presentation of all of the articles as we get closer to Springtown meeting, or is this our one bite at the apple?
No, no, this is, this is in keeping with the board's request some years ago to get a early look at what the town generated for requests, but that further one will be done in the late winter, probably.
probably.
You know, the one I would comment on, and I only bring this up because I sit on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we talked about it a little bit before, is the 75 Meadowbrook Road Project. I guess the plan is to take the house and move it to another location for veteran housing. The other component of it is to purchase the land, as Michael said, with a conservation restriction, and that cost hasn't been negotiated yet. But at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, I kind of opined that at the last discussion this board had about the, regarding the Starbuck Lane property, while we agreed to that, I think that we all had reservations about future commitments to purchasing buildable properties. And this is a buildable property. It's going to be impacted, I guess, was in the narrative that it would likely be impacted by the increased flushing that will be a result of the Parker's River Bridge. But the narrative also said that it is, it will, it's a buildable piece of property, and with a proper flood-proof foundation, there would be nothing preventing someone from building on the land. That's my belief, anyway. So, I just wanted to have that discussion, if the rest of you recall, similarly to what I recall, when we talked about the Starbuck Lane property, specifically the issue of buying, of continuing the practice of buying buildable parcels.
I recall that discussion, and, you know, and I think, I know I feel very concerned about, we have a very substantial amount of town property now for a variety of reasons. And, you know, we have issues with regard to our tax base and with regard to taxes, and I think it's the wrong way to go. You know, I'm just, I don't think we can continually, or continue to have not only taxable property taken out, but then tax revenues being used to implement that plan. So, you know, I think we, my personal view is we need to sit back for a while and get other things under control to keep our taxes within control.
I have questions on that, too. So, it says they're moving it to 282 Winslow Gray. Is that, that's town-owned now?
No. It's a, it's a piece of property, it's, I think it's literally a half a mile away. There's...
I currently own the property.
Okay. Sorry. Which property?
The 282 Winslow Gray. I currently own that.
And what's on that now?
It's actually, there's two parcels of land there. There is a house on one of the parcels, and I have the subdivisible for a second lot for this purpose. So, it creates an additional tax base because that lot is now one lot, and it's going to be divided into two.
Yeah, but we're putting affordable home on it.
Correct, which, and we do pay taxes on the affordable homes.
Yeah, so it's, I'm just trying to figure out, because how many units of affordability would be in here? Just one?
Currently, there's an affordable house on 282 Winslow Gray.
Okay.
Which is one large parcel with, which is subdivitable to the second parcel. So, we're going to keep the affordable housing on, the second property will be listed as Wedgemere, and then the affordable house, the veterans' home, will be on 282 Winslow Gray.
So, all said and done, I guess I'm, I understand what we're trying to do, but is it, does this fit into what we would allow for affordability under CPA in terms of a buy-down? I mean, it looks like 98 plus 37...
Thirty-five.
Plus 36, so we're at 171 for our portion of one unit. If my memory serves me correctly, I think we were talking about the max that we've done before is like 65 for a unit when we were doing multifamily. I'm not sure what the, am I, am I reading that wrong, Mr. Berry? The total is 171 just for the relocation, and so, and I'm all for veteran homes. I mean, I think we need to do more of it, but we're talking one unit.
Right. You are reading that part correct, that the relocation cost would be about $171,000.
So, we'd be fully owning the property, or we'd be selling it at an affordable rate? How does, what are we doing with it? I guess I don't understand that.
I would defer to Christine or Karen.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is just, I mean, we just got this information, so I don't, I haven't had time really to read it and look through it.
I was just going to ask a question.
The question really is, so the town is investing $171,000. This is, open space aside, because that's a whole 'nother dollar amount to purchase the land, correct?
Right.
So, we will be in for one unit, $171,000 for affordability. Is that something that our town has consistently done? Are we actually buying this piece for what? We're, the town's going to own it? We're going to sell it at an affordable rate? What?
Do you want to try?
I can try.
You can try.
We would, we would keep the parcel of land and keep it as an affordable unit. The corporation currently maintains several properties in town. So, the proposal, the land would still be under the corporation name.
What corporation?
It'll be a rental.
It'll be a rental.
I don't know if it's helpful for Michael to introduce himself, because he's the founder and owner of Building Dreams.
Building Dreams, correct.
And he's been a partner to the Affordable Housing Trust over time on a number of projects.
What other projects, just out of curiosity, that you have?
We have 7A and 7B Murray Road. We have 282 Winslow Gray.
And how were those purchased? They were purchased through the town CPA?
I think through grants from the Affordable Housing Trust as part of a competitive bid process.
Okay.
So, the trust says, we want to create, and I think that Michael has largely been doing rental housing. So, we want to do scattered-site rental housing. We want to increase our rental stock here, there, and everywhere that's affordable. But the town isn't interested in holding the property and kind of renting it out on a monthly basis, so we advertise a program, and Michael would submit a response, or, you know, any number of people might submit responses, to buy a property and operate it in this way, where he owns the property but rents it affordably.
Okay. So, in the previous units that the town has done, what type of supplement has the town, the...
Yeah, I'd have, I have to double-check. I was looking through the application, and I don't see it.
And I'd also like to know what rent, what the cost of the rent is.
I think that the buy-down component, and I don't know, Dan, if you know off the top of your head, or remember, Eric, I think it's around $100,000 per unit for a buy-down.
I think it's capped at 100.
Right. And the most, sorry, the most we've received is 75. There have been varied numbers. They've gone through 50 to 75,000. Most we've received is 75,000 per unit. They are rented at $950.
I think that kind of the added thing that, you know, if we look at cost and benefit, I think the added component of a benefit here is a new initiative sponsored by the trust. The trust has been long interested for the last few years in doing some kind of veteran housing. And so, I think that that's something that's, it's hard to quantify. But it's, we'll get you the buy-down numbers and the affordable rents.
As I said, I think veteran housing is very well-needed, especially in the rental and the affordable rental. But, you know, you think about that kind of money and how many units we may be able to do, I'm not sure that that's, moving it and doing that's the best use of, that's just off the top of my head. My other question, thank you, sorry. My other question was about the Little League backstop. I understand there's neighbors, but having been involved with Little League, we rebuilt complete fields and had to fundraise. This is the first time I've seen any funding for the Little League, so I'm just curious about what that means for the potential future. And I also was under the understanding that recreation was not allowed to purchase something that they weren't involved in initially. Has that law changed with CPA funds?
Right. On the latter issue, I'm not sure, but there was a previous CPA project for the other Little League field at that site, where the fence was repaired and some landscaping was done. So, that was probably three years ago.
Are you sure that that was CPA?
Yes, it was.
And that was sponsored by the fire department.
I was going to say, the fire department did that.
Okay. Okay. I just, I wasn't sure, I didn't think that, so this is the same backstop?
No, it's a different field.
It's a different one. So, this means, I guess I'm just, want to make sure I'm not specific to this. So, we were told Playground, for instance, had equipment, something that wasn't initially done by CPA. Is that allowed now through CPA funds, something that they had nothing to do with initially?
I believe it is.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Norm? Thank you. I have some questions about the recreation, Sandy Pond, the Little League back, not the Little League backstop, the Riverwalk Park, with regard to what are, what phases this represents. And I have to refresh my memory on Sandy Pond, how many phases there are, what's the long-term commitment, and where does this put us? How much have we invested so far, and where does this put us in, in terms of total investment? And I have the same question with regard to the Riverwalk Park.
Sure. I'll turn to Mr. Colby.
Yes, thank you. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Previously, CPA funded the design and engineering associated with Sandy Pond. That was approved, and so, this element is the first component of the construction phases. That process of the design and engineering is at the 30% stage right now. Based upon that, we can come up with some good numbers on what the total master plan implementation costs will look like, and that's approximately $5 million. So, the first effort we received back from the consultant was a two-phase approach, which was approximately $3.2 million in the first phase and 1.8 in the second phase. Realizing there isn't that amount of CPA funds available, we asked them to look at breaking that down into multiple phases and smaller bites at the apple, if you will. And so, this is what's being proposed at just over $1 million for our first phase. So, at this point, it's at least three phases. It really depends on how much can be accomplished and how many phases that would carry out to.
So, how much was invested in the design phase?
Approximately three.
What was the total plan budget?
Approximately $300,000. I think the 275, I'm being told, is the more precise number.
Okay. So, and about 30% of that has been spent so far?
I wouldn't say 30% has been spent. The designs, we're at a 30% design stage.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, the total project is 5,003, then? Is that correct?
Approximately $5 million, yes.
Okay. All right. So, I guess what we could say is that, starting with Phase One, there's another $4 million to go.
That's correct.
And then, Riverwalk?
Fair enough. Fair enough. I think with regard to the Riverwalk, it was approximately $700,000 for design and permitting and $6 million for construction. Back in 2018, our original CPA application was for $3.7 million, which would pay for the full design and permitting, and then 50% of the overall construction. But at that time, the CPA really felt they didn't have enough funds to go around, and they asked the drive-in site utilization committee to reduce their request to $2.2 million, which would basically cover design and permitting and 25% of construction, knowing that we would come back at a later date, which is what we've done here, asking for that original request of the $1.5 million. What we have done since annual town meeting is we have actually applied for a land and water conservation grant, which would pay for part of the design and permitting of $204,000, and then also $752,000 in construction. That is a reimbursement program. Our application was viewed very favorably, but we won't know for sure until the end of the year. So, we don't want to expend any funds that we can't get fully reimbursed for, so we're taking this fall in order to work on procurement of a consultant, so that we could start work on the project in January, as soon as we have that grant. Hopefully, we have that grant in place.
So, the grant total would be how much?
The grant total request was for $956,000 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Okay.
And our total request between the $2.2 million from the original CPA and the $1.5 we're asking for now would be the total of $3.7 million. One of the things of the issues with regard to construction is not all grant funding agencies consider all components of construction to be eligible, so we have to be careful with regard to that. And there's certain parts of the project, such as the boardwalk, which is in a certain area where federal funding is not allowed in order to construct that. So, there's a little bit of a balancing act, a little dancing here, in order to find the right grant applications that'll apply to all of our eligible items, and then supplementing that with town funds to, for things that are ineligible.
All right. So, the total cost of everything for...
For construction and design and permitting is $6.7 million.
$7 million.
$6.7 million, $6 million for construction and $700,000 for design and permitting.
$6 million, $700,000. And in, we authorized how much previously?
2.2.
So, so then, the 2.2 plus the $1,005 is 3.7, so there's another $3 million hanging out there.
Well, we could add the $956,000 of the Land and Water Conservation Grant. We are looking at potentially a C-Point grant. I think we would like to get a little bit further along in design. The closer you get to actually being ready to bid and construct, the more favorably you're viewed with your grant applications.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the numbers.
Sure.
So, again, if, if the total project is $6.7 million, and we've, and including the $1,005 that is in this schedule, plus the 2.2, that's 3.7.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's saying there's another $3 million out there.
Correct, of which we are looking favorably for $956,000 for Land and Water Conservation Grant, and that would leave about $2 million that we'd be continuing to look for grants.
That we would what?
That we would need to look for grant funding for, of approximately $2 million, in addition to the applications we've made to date.
Okay. Yeah, because I, you know, I think, my recollection is, at this stage, that, you know, we had the discussion about the initial funding, the 2.2 million, and the, there was discussions about private funding and private contributions and that sort of thing. And, you know, it's just my impression that we would be doing a fundraising campaign, not just grant writing, but fundraising.
I don't recall that, but that certainly, that's not something we've looked into at this point. I was not aware that that was something that the board was looking into.
Norm, if I can just add, I think this, I think the prospects, I mean, I don't want to make a prediction that I can bet on.
You have to live up to.
But I feel very confident that the way this project has been put together, the way it's been supported by the town, the way it's laid out, I think the town is going to be very competitive. Let's put it that way. Very competitive and ranked very strongly and very, very highly with some of the other grant sources of funding that are out there and available to the town. I feel, based on, I, I mean, I'm in the business of getting grant money for cities and towns throughout Massachusetts, and... and towns throughout Massachusetts, and, and I've talked to funding sources about this particular project, and no one's saying the money's in the bank, but what they're saying is, is apply. We like your project, it's very competitive, and you really never know with every round what, what's going to be available, how much money is out there. But I think this is the kind of project that will do very, very well competitively. So I think focusing on the grant sources, particularly state funding right now, you're right, there's some federal issues, I think is, is, is very much a priority. So I think you're teeing this up nicely, I think, from a grant point of view. So that might be helpful for you, Norm.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Thank you.
So I guess, I've got the, the mic. So it's, now that it's my turn, let me just sort of throw out a couple of other questions. With respect to the Meadowbrook Road project, I want to acknowledge Eric's point, that, you know, as a matter of policy, there should be a higher threshold that we really assess when we look at, you know, taking buildable property off. But I think based on what I've heard about the project and the way it's been presented and the kind of benefits that are associated with it, I think that quite frankly, to me it would, it would exceed that standard because there are so many other benefits associated with this project. I'm a strong supporter of affordable housing and, and finding ways to prioritize rental housing for veterans. That's a need that exists here that's often, that is unmet. And for the town of Yarmouth to do even one rental house, affordable rental housing for eligible veteran family would be a huge step forward. In my discussions with veterans groups, you know, they're, they're desperate for this type of housing. This is so critically needed. So I think for Yarmouth to be able to do that, I think would be a huge service to the community, particularly the veterans' community. So that's one of the major reasons I, I would be more inclined to, to recommend and be supportive of this project. I have another question with respect to the site itself. I noticed that from the maps and drawings that I've seen, there's a boardwalk, I think, right next to the property. Is that correct?
That is correct. Town-owned.
It's a town-owned boardwalk?
Yes.
So conceivably, you could have right next to that site, an area, I'm assuming, again, there's a conservation restriction, so you could actually have a public access area where people could come and potentially, you know, park their car, it could be a small park, and you can actually have people walking out on the board, the town-owned boardwalk and get some fairly amazing vistas of Swan Pond. Is that a, am I missing something here?
No, you are absolutely correct. At the same time, while you're taking a septic system off of that pond.
Right. Which could be, obviously, in the grand scheme of things, as we improve the flushing and the tidal activity there, is only going to be more of an issue. But could you comment on the boardwalk?
There's only a two-car parking space for the boardwalk park right now. There's, along Swan Pond, there's conservation land, then there's a, the town park is a Meadowbrook boardwalk.
Mm-hmm.
And then this would expand that park. The property is 1/3 wetlands. So the driveway itself could be more parking for people.
So it would provide, it would definitely provide important public access?
Yes.
Okay.
And in the cost of, to move the house off of that property, we propose to regrade and redo that whole area, so it could have a, a parking area for that. Exactly.
Well, that could be a huge benefit for that whole part of West Yarmouth. I mean, there are people that, you know, I mean, the Bass Hole, I mean, folks from all over come there. I'm not suggesting you're going to have that kind of crowd coming here, but it's a very nice spot. And the sunsets in that watershed in West Yarmouth, I mean, you see that at the drive-in site. I mean, the sunsets are spectacular. I mean, I can't imagine, I mean, but you must get the same kind of views from that area. So it could, it could be another hidden gem, you know, in the town of Yarmouth, this particular site. So I'm, I'm pretty enthusiastic about it. So that's, those are my questions on and concerns with respect to the Meadowbrook Road project. On the Riverwalk Park project, I'm pleased to hear about how things are going and particularly all the grant money that you're going after, because I think, like I said, I think we, this is a terrific project and these funding sources, I'd be shocked if we didn't score big. So, keep it up. Keep it up. Keep up the good work. So those are my comments. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more question about the boardwalk. Is that boardwalk a town-owned asset now, maintained by the town?
The one at Swan Pond?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I just think anytime we take town land like that, if there's going to be a park or anything like that.
You're not the only one.
Oh, you're right. I didn't know.
I'm getting up to speed here.
That we, make sure we have a plan on maintaining.
Slow process. Finally getting to see it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
I assume that the, the house and the land can be taken separately. The moving, the relocation of the house can be independent of whether or not the town actually wants to purchase the land. Is that a fair statement? Yes? Okay. So it's not going to be a, an all-or-nothing deal?
If I could just. Two articles.
What's that?
Are you suggesting two articles?
I hadn't thought of that, but I think that would be a good idea. Because, you know, nobody's going to say no to the potential for affordable housing, but people might feel differently when it comes to taking buildable properties off the tax rules.
But what happens if one passes and the other doesn't? So if we can't buy the land, we can't move the house.
What's the likelihood of people saying no to afford, to a house that wants to be sold to us in the name of veteran housing?
No, but what happens if somebody doesn't want to take the land? What happens if they don't want to take another piece of property off the tax rules?
No, that's why I'm saying, break it into two articles, because people may be in favor. It gives people the opportunity to say yes to the, to the house relocation component, but perhaps they don't want to purchase the land. I don't think the two are tied together. And I, there was, there was some talk at the Affordable Housing Trust of the owner really wanting the town to have this piece of property. So I don't know if the owner would be willing to break it apart, but I would be in favor of breaking it apart into a house component and a land component.
Just so you know how this all started, it started with Natural Resources and Conservation coming to open space, saying that this parcel was going to be up for sale. The gentleman is 91 years old and he's going to go into assisted living. And I said, well, open space can't acquire a piece of property if it has a building on it. Then I talked to Mary Wagon. She put me in touch with, you know, Mark, Mike Williams, and we said, well, we can have an open space piece and we can have the affordable housing piece. It's two, it's a joint venture.
And I, I would just like to see town meeting voters have the greatest amount of flexibility when making the decision.
And I think the appraisals are going to have to adjust that as well.
True. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael, for your presentation. Next item, Division of Natural Resources Replacement Officer.
Mr. Chairman, we had a review done by the Matrix Consulting Group that wrapped up about last year. We had presentations on that. One of the recommendations in a document I sent to you was shared services, and their recommendation was an opportunity to have unarmed conservation officers. That being said, we also had a presentation last year by the Service Employees International Union about moving our Department of Natural Resources officers to Group 4 Retirement. In your memo that Pat Armstrong generated, the group that the resource officers belong to is Group 1, actually. I think the memo says Group 2. That was my mistake. But a correction to that would be Group 1. The idea back at that time was Group 4 essentially allows an employee that falls into that category to retire at 80% of their benefit at age 55. For all the other groups that aren't public safety, Group 1 and 2, for instance, typically you don't reach the 80% mark until you have reached age 65 and usually about over 30 years of service. So the theory being that folks in Group 1 would stay on the job longer, they're eligible to stay on the job longer, and the pension liability is, is a bit less over the course of their lifetime. So what I had asked Pat to do at this point in time was to go out, do some comparables with some other towns around us to give you the option. We are presently open with one position down that has not been refilled from an armed DNR officer, and in keeping with some of the wishes of the board members that I had heard at the time, that they would like to have an opportunity to discuss this further to decide what we should do about that. So this is the opportunity to do that. In your packet included with the Matrix report was commentary by Director Von Hohn related to his take on the report, and also a memo from Pat Armstrong related to what the options are. And to kind of highlight those, one option is to just rehire the position. There's, it's ready to go. The position description's ready. It's, you know, maybe it's a $6,000 or so, $7,000 trade-off with salary, but having firearms causes a little bit more training expense to occur. I've asked Pat to document that as well. So I wanted to bring it for further guidance before we hired the position to the board for your commentary on that.
Mr. Chairman, before you get started, may I ask two questions?
Sure.
Number one, the, the Group 4 question isn't before us tonight.
No, that's correct. And actually, since the presentation in the spring, I had spoke to Director Von Hohn, and he wasn't inclined to support the inquiry as it was going down. And I think the, I don't know, and I haven't talked to the folks from SEIU, but our recommendation to them was to try to address this at a statewide level for natural resource officers as opposed to picking off a community individually to do that. And I think at the last moment that they had spoke, they were going to try to do something, at least in Barnstable County. I'm not sure if that's still the situation, Carl, but perhaps you can address that.
Yeah, everything is on hold. The direction that was taken was under the advisement of, of the town administrator, of having the union come in and do the presentation versus myself doing a presentation, looking at the potential of going to Group 4 due to the law enforcement component of this. There are three other towns that have armed natural resource officers. Each one of them have been modeled after the Yarmouth Department of Natural Resources over the years. The Yarmouth Department of Natural Resources has been in operation as-is for over 40 years. Their natural resource officers have been armed for that period of time and have received the same type of training, the reserve intermittent training for the police academy, and have held either special police appointments or reserve police appointments, which they qualify for going through that academy training. Just to touch on a few things, and as I put into the memo that I submitted to you 2018 in reference to the, the nature of the job, the nature of the job is performed in remote areas, maybe on the waters, in the marshes, or in the woodlands. We are responsible, under the Division of Natural Resources, for 150 miles of shoreline that we conduct our business. We also have 35 square miles of open water that we enforce regulations on. We have, as you know, the town is 28 square miles, but 7.75 is all open space here in the town of Yarmouth, which we conduct our operations enforcing environmental and conservation enforcement to those laws and preserving and protecting our natural resources here in the town of Yarmouth. As a coastal community, people come here for those resources and come here to engage in the use of those natural resources, maybe hunting, fishing, shellfishing, whatever it may be, hiking. So most coastal communities look at these resources as a valuable part of the community that makes us unique as coastal communities and is what draws visitors to our towns to engage in our waters and our beaches and our clean environment and our natural resources. So I view, and my officers view, our job is very important to keeping this town vibrant and moving forward and provide a significant public safety benefit to the community. We are often approached by the public in the conservation areas, on the trails, as we are patrolling them and checking for maintenance purposes on our waters, at our beaches, at our shorefront facilities, thanking us for our service and thanking us for being there and providing this service. And they are much more comfortable using our facilities because they know that natural resource officers are in the areas that can respond to, to certain circumstances and do enforce our environmental laws, maybe poaching of shellfish or, or wildlife, or wetland violations, or illegal encampments and camping, to a whole slew of other environmental regulations that make us a very unique department. As, in the memo from Pat, it does list the positions. I have a field supervisor and two natural resource officers that are in this, that have these duties and the training and are the field officers primarily. Being down one officer, I'm 30% down of that capability of going out there and doing it, doing the, the duties that are, are at our, are on our task. We, we run seven days a week with that small staffing. We're not a staff of 20, or 30, or 50. We cover the landmass as well as the waters. We routinely come in after hours to respond to calls as well as work rotating shifts when we do have issues, such as this year seemed to be in a significant issue with poaching of blue-clawed crabs in a lot of our estuaries where people are allowed to be catching blue-clawed crabs in the dark, using headlamps and nets. The problem is they're taking everything they were catching, including females and undersized. So in the dark, at 11, 12, 1, 2 o'clock, we shifted our, our rotation shifts and we're out there doing that enforcement, putting a presence in to deter this type of abuse to our natural resources and illegal activities. Being armed is a tool. That tool is on our belt and is visible. As many people say, when you look the part of a, of a enforcement officer, those tools on your belt are the number-one deterrent of any type of impact or any type of assault that may be conducted because someone does not want to be caught doing an illegal activity. We deal with many of the same people that the police department deals with. These people go to these secluded areas, so they're not within the typical view of the police department. Most of the people we deal with have some form of implement or weapon, whether it's a fisherman with a flay knife, or a gaff, or a boat hook, or a flare gun, or hunters that are out legally with guns in their possession, loaded bows, crossbows, knives, whatever it might be. These are people engaged in activities where they can have that, and those types of things are part of what they use during those activities. We have gone out and we have checked fishermen and come to find out that there have been warrants for their arrests. So we've contacted the police department, rendered the, the arrest for the warrants, and the police department have, has moved on with processing those people. So we come across a significant diverse people in these areas. We also deal with wildlife, maybe rabies, aggressive wildlife, coyotes, being in cramped quarters with raccoons that have fallen through skylight homes. We have tools that we use. However, there has been circumstances where animals have been discharged by weapon, and actually, one of those cases was a rabid raccoon where the natural resource officer was unable to get to the, his weapon in trying to control the, the rabid raccoon where a police was unable to get to his weapon in trying to control the rabid raccoon where a police officer that happened to be there because it was in a, in a neighborhood area dispatched the animal with his sidearm. We have deer that are hit by cars, coyotes that are hit by cars that are not deceased that need to be put down. And many times, we are routinely called by the police department to do this and do this in a humane manner. The list can go on and I can take up an hour, listing the activities that we do and the dangers to the activities that we conduct and why having armed officers are for their protection as well as the public's protection. As I stated, the department has been in this capacity for over 40 years, since the late 1970s or mid-1970s. So it's not something new to the town of Yarmouth. We've been operating this way for a very long time and the protection of the public and the officers are the foremost importance to us. If these officers were not armed, then there'll be a lot of activities that aren't going to be engaged in because their safety could not be guaranteed or the public's safety. We take a look at some of the cost analysis that have been put out here. And if we are not doing this work, and I've always called my officers the value-added employees because they don't only do the enforcement component, but they also do labor work. They clear trails, they build bridges, they do an awful lot of other things than just the law enforcement. But the tools are there and they're able to go from one activity right into an enforcement activity without missing a step. If, as you can see in the cost comparisons that were provided to you, starting salary is $54,000 or just a little bit over that. I would anticipate if we're not doing this work and that work is shifted to the police department, the cost to cover personnel will be astronomically higher than what a natural resource officer is paid. Or those calls will go unanswered. Impacts to the environment and to our resources here in the town of Yarmouth will, will not be protected or managed properly. Going back to the comparisons that were provided, the armed NROs for Falmouth, Wareham, and they didn't include Plymouth, but the Plymouth rate I have here are actually 2018 figures. They're not current figures. The current figure of 54,000 is the FY '20 figure for Yarmouth. So it looks like it's significantly more. However, the Plymouth, if we take a look at the 2018 rates as the other towns are shown here, Plymouth is paid higher than the town of Yarmouth and then the town of Wareham and then Falmouth would fall in line, all within about $10,000 to $14,000 of each other within that paying range. Now surprisingly, taking a look at our neighbors of Dennis and the, and Barnstable, the unarmed natural resource officers in those communities are paid more than our armed natural resource officers as well as the armed natural resource officers in Plymouth, Falmouth, and Wareham. I was surprised, but I confirm that, and in fact, that is the case. The Falmouth, Wareham, and Plymouth in the town of Yarmouth cover the areas of animal control, harbor and waterways, shellfish and natural resources. For example, in the town of Dennis, natural resource officers kind of oversee the four-wheel-drive area and the conservation filings. The land management is mainly done by the Dennis Conservation Trust, not by their own staff, and they do shellfish propagation for that. However, waterways and harbor master are conducted by a separate department with separate personnel as well as animal control is done, is underneath the police department in the town of Dennis. And if you put together the staffing and the cost, they're much more than what ours is with the town of Yarmouth to cover the same area and the same responsibilities as we do. Barnstable is a huge department. We can't even compare that in the number of personnel or their budget, but it's very similar with the exception of the NROs don't do after-hour calls, they don't do hunting inspections, they pretty much assist with sandy neck, they assist with some of the land management, and they also assist with the shellfish propagation. So it is also mentioned here of some of the other towns of East Tame, Orleans, their Department of Natural Resources consists of shellfish and harbor master departments. In 1995, we started to see a changeover in the names of those departments, hoping to mirror and be able to come into line with the town of Yarmouth the way our departments are set up and pull departments together. But those towns have not moved in that direction over time. As Dan stated, our offices are Group One. Even in Group Four, you would still need to have 32 years to collect your full 80%, so that's a pretty good career at that age. We're not even looking at that right now. It is on hold. And we haven't pursued any of that at this point. Right now, we've been in a reduced staff since July. My current staff is getting pretty darn burned out, coming in at 2 o'clock in the morning or, or working longer days because of, we don't have a full complement of staff to do a good rotating shift and keep the services. And my staff is very proud of the services they provide the town of Yarmouth in what they do and how they protect the town and the town's, excuse me, and the town's resources. The number of calls that we go on now, in the summertime, it's anywhere from 45, 30 to 45 calls. In the winter, we still go on anywhere between 12 and 16 calls a day, and that is for maybe hunting or shellfishing or potential activities dealing with wetland violations or clearing a brush or people camping, whatever it might be, that are enforceable offenses. And then you can throw on top of that equal amount of calls dealing with wildlife and other topics that educating the public is very important to keep the public safe and for them to understand, you know, what to do if they do have issues with wildlife or interactions with wildlife on their properties. So there's no shortage of that. The NROs back the animal control officers up a number of the homes that we go to with menacing dogs, loose dogs, or homes that are known by the police. And an NRO will go with the ACO or a police cruiser would be requested to go to those if an NRO is not available. The demographics here in town have changed, as you can see through just the police Facebook page. In turn, we do deal with the same people in a lesser degree and in different circumstances, but they are still people that we do deal with. I can continue on all the things that we do and all the responsibilities that we have that we achieve with a small staff, with a small budget. However, the most important thing, and I still feel strongly about this, is officer safety and the public's safety moving forward. If we do not fill this position as in kind, then scheduling and coverage and the ability of this new hire to do the work that's equal to someone else in their grade will not be achievable. In turn, you know, we may be looking at issues with unions and everything else. So I'm urging your support to fill the position as is, to keep moving forward as we have been for all this time, serving the public and the natural resources and making Yarmouth a safe and a healthy environment and a protected environment for our natural resources.
Thank you, Carl. Questions or comments from the board?
I'd make a motion to allow Carl to fill the position.
As?
As is.
As is.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We'll have some discussion before we vote, perhaps. Carl, you did a great job outlining all the various aspects of what the officers do and the circumstances under which they're called upon to respond, things that aren't, that don't readily come to mind when somebody thinks of what a natural resource officer does. But I'm particularly concerned about your recitation of nighttime responses and responses in remote areas where you have people camping out illegally. I think down near the hospital, there was a bust where people were cooking drugs out there in, in one of these pitched-out tents. I don't think I'd want to respond to any of those situations without having some kind of arms. What do you, what do they carry, by the way? Are they 9mm?
We do all of our firearms training with the Yarmouth Police Department, and those weapons are issued by the Yarmouth Police Department so that they all fall into compliance with the Yarmouth training and weapons that they do carry. So, and rest assured, we're not going out there without anybody knowing or without any chance of any type of backup. The issues that we have is when we call the police department and a cruiser is sent, they may get to a trailhead, but they may not understand where the trails are and what they do. Most of the time, if we're doing that type of thing, we're calling another natural resource officer to go with us as a team.
Carl, what are you packing? That was the question.
Oh. We have a choice of, yes, I'm sorry, we have a choice to carry a .45 caliber or a 9mm, which is the same as the police department, sorry.
And the other, the other thing that you pointed out is protection against dangerous animals. You know, what do you do in situ, or protect the public from, or child, let's say, from some kind of a rabid animal? You convince me that, that it would be a mistake to disarm the officer.
I have a couple of questions. Carl, thanks. You know, I think you gave a very substantial, or made a substantial argument regarding the arming the officers. You know, the enforcement activities, what is the percentage of time that's devoted to enforcement of, you know, shellfish, wildlife, fisheries, harbor master regulations?
It depends on the time of year. It depends on our other staffing. When we do have seasonal personnel that can be doing other activities, when we are the busiest for the enforcement component. It could be anywhere from 100% in a given day for one of the officers, or it could be 40% on a given day of doing this. But that can change at a moment's notice. They could be out maintaining a conservation trailer, assisting the shellfish constable with some sort of shellfish propagation, and we get a call and they need to respond to that.
Okay. What is the, now, you issue citations or tickets or what do you do?
Yeah. Under the laws, state, we enforce state, federal, and local laws, including bylaws and town regulations. Under the directive of the Board of Selectmen many, many years ago, we were asked to try to educate and not be heavy-handed with our enforcement. And I'm a firm believer in education over, you know, heavy enforcement. Many of the people that are engaged, especially here for folks that are visiting and enjoying our environment and our resources, may or may not know the laws. However, we can issue citations. There are a number of laws that we can arrest on. There's a number of laws that we can summons or a combination. So there is, there runs a full gamut depending on the violations.
All right. Well, I'm trying to get a handle on, in the, particularly in the wildlife area or the fisheries area, not necessarily harbor master, but wildlife and fisheries. And what's the dollar value of the citations or tickets that you've generated in the last five years?
They can go anywhere from $25 per violation up to $3,000 or $5,000 depending on the type of dumping.
What have we done?
We usually are in between $25 and $300.
A year?
On citations.
Now, what is the cumulative amount?
Cumulative, I haven't totaled that up, to be perfectly honest with you. I would probably say it's several thousands of dollars, depending on the years and depending on the violations.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to envision that in terms of, you know, I know there's been some well-publicized issues with poaching of bass, striped bass, at the canal. You know, we certainly have that possibility within our environment on both sides. So, you know, that's, I'm very interested in maintaining the, the stock of game fish. And I think that that's, that's something that's of great interest to me, but it, it applies equally to things like blue crab and, and things of that nature. But I'm a little bit disappointed in the, in the citation amounts because I think that that's something that, you know, there's got to be some teeth.
Correct. And here in the Commonwealth, a lot of our regulations still have a lot of the old fines associated with it. You go to places like Florida, North Carolina, where possession of a, one of the species of snappers down there, you know, they can issue citations up to, you know, $5,000 per fish, and it's also an arrestable offense. So Massachusetts is pretty behind with the way the fines are, especially for the environmental, environmental violations. I mean, we were involved with a very large case. We didn't see any of the fines that were generated coming back to the town of Yarmouth. However, there was Elver poaching case that went to a Lacey Act violation, which involved people in Japan and everything. And the federal government, of course, who led that push, got hundreds of thousand dollars in fines. Unfortunately, we who instigated it did not partake in any of that, which would have been nice.
I'm not sure that we have any of the very large party boats coming out of Yarmouth. I think they're more out of Hyannis, perhaps Sakotaka or whatever. I just think, I've witnessed that personally with very large coolers that are about the size of that desk that you're at, filled with fish.
Yes.
And with captains avoiding the DNR officers that were at the dock. So, you know, I think that thing, that type of thing needs to be discouraged. But, and you know, as Mike expressed, I'm very concerned about confrontations, particularly if we're if we're dealing with enforcement of regulations and fisheries and wildlife and that sort of thing. I think there needs to be a presence, so... Thank you.
President.
Thank you. I'm torn on this one because I think it's... It's very difficult, you know? The old saying is there's no better way to beat a bad guy with a gun than to have a good guy with a gun, so I think it's extremely important that when you go into situations like that, that you're armed. However, I think it's also problematic that we have virtually two separate law enforcement types of organizations in one community in terms of the hierarchy and what the authority is. So for me, I think that that's... And I know we've had this conversation before, but I also think the training needs to be equal, the requirements need to be equal, you know, because it is a liability to our community. Having said that, I'm curious, seeing as Falmouth's really the only other town on the Cape that carries weapons, how do the other communities, when they are enforcing hunting and things like that, how do they manage that without weapons? Do they do it with a police officer? They just don't do it?
They don't do it. They don't do it. And here on the Cape, we have so few mass environmental police officers. Most hunters, you know, and those folks are not checked. The word out there, and has been the word for close to 20 years now, is if you're going to hunt the town of Yarmouth, you better have all your paperwork in hand, and you better have the proper licenses to possess the firearms because you're going to get checked.
Well, the state has environmental police officers as well that does enforcement.
Correct, and they're few and far between. I think there's a total of four for the Cape. During hunting season, they're tied up at Otis and other places and the seashore, and we don't see them locally.
We don't see them locally because we have you folks doing it? Or is that what the other towns on the Cape also have the same?
The other towns on the Cape are not seeing them, and I think, you know, they also have some comfort that we are doing that work here in the town of Yarmouth in handling those situations, no different than the Coast Guard where we fall between the two Coast Guard stations in Chatham and Woods Hole, and we get calls from those entities to go and respond to calls because they don't have the resources to go to it. So that respect from those entities were highly regarded. As far as the training, that's why we do train with the Yarmouth Police Department, why we do go through the Reserve Police Interment Academy, not the full-time academy. It's a three-month academy versus a six-month academy or thereabouts. Hours continually change. So the Reserve Academy may spend three days on motor vehicle law, which we don't enforce, but the full-time academy may spend five or six days on motor vehicle law. We know where the boundaries are with our expertise. We do not do routine traffic stops.
You don't?
We do not.
Because I have seen natural resources with lights on behind a car before.
And we have done that, but we will call directly into dispatch, say, we have a vehicle that's operating erratically, or do you want us to stop the vehicle until you send an officer?
So is the weapon what makes it synonymous with law enforcement as opposed to... I mean, because I see you've very much made the presence of law enforcement on all the vehicles now.
And we were actually asked to do that a number of years ago, that they wanted our vehicles fully marked that way.
Okay. All right. Well, my personal opinion is if you're going to be law enforcement, then it should be under the structure of the police department with one law enforcement chief. Your expertise is different, but I think it's... There could be a lot of... And I know you guys do work together, but I just find the structure odd. If you're going to be armed, you should be trained equally because of the town liability with that and be under that structure, or we should go in another direction. I'm not a fan of going into the woods without weapons, but I'm not so sure that the natural resources particularly need to do that alone or how that happens in other communities. But, you know, in terms of the money, the funding, you know, our department is very small, so, you know, what's... I mean, obviously, I don't think that that dollar amount can quantify somebody's safety, but I just find the structure peculiar, and I think it's a bigger question than just answering whether or not we hire one person under the current or if we operate in a different manner.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
You know, I think that to say natural resources and the police department should have one chief because they are... They fall under law enforcement is the same as saying the police department and the fire department should have one chief because they fall under public safety. They are not... They don't perform the same tasks. You know, I don't think the police department is going to want to go into the woods and do hunting enforcement or go out in a boat and do fishing enforcement. Carl is charged with enforcing wildlife laws. Police department is charged with enforcing... I don't know, what's the best term for it? Civil laws?
Civil or motor vehicle.
And criminal laws.
So, you know, they might, again, you know, I think that it's not fair to say that they perform similar functions just because they fall under a similar heading.
Right.
And, you know, they have existed the way they have for many years, and, you know, I can tell you from, you know, as being an avid hunter, being out in the woods with, you know, I'm a... I hate to say it, but my group is an unsavory one sometimes. And there are people that I will avoid in the woods, or there are places that I will avoid because I know the people that go there. I wouldn't want to have to do enforcement. I wouldn't want to have to do Carl's job without the benefit of being protected. And I think that were you to say that, or were this board to make a move to disarm them, then you would have to recreate, you know, the mission of the natural resources, recreate their job descriptions, and I think that our natural environment would greatly suffer because I can tell you Carl and his team have done a tremendous job in terms of, you know, licensing enforcement and, you know, we... In the past, we have had a tremendous poaching problem here in Yarmouth, and that has faded due to Carl's efforts, and I don't think, you know, it would be practical to ask Carl and his men to make those efforts, sometimes, you know, up against groups of people, where he not to have the sidearm deterring any action against them. You know, I think that you could view a sidearm one of two ways. You can view it as inviting trouble, or you can view it as deterring trouble, and I think that in cases of law enforcement, I mean, I don't... You can probably have never had an incident with somebody being aggressive or violent or probably very few. Would that be the same if they didn't have a gun on their hip? I doubt it.
I'd like to say something about that, too. I just, you know, people who are... And I know you're not out there constantly looking for poachers, but people who are out poaching, whether it's fish or whether it's wildlife, have rationalized that behavior. They've decided that it's easier to go out and do those antisocial behaviors than it is to follow the law. It's not a great stretch for them to rationalize very difficult behavior with a law enforcement officer who's not armed and to intimidate, and I don't think we should put our guys in that position, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carl, in looking through the numbers here, I noticed that the average calls per day is around 14 calls per day, and few of them are law enforcement-related. Has that changed at any...
I'm not exactly sure. Those figures came from the Matrix study, and there appeared to be a number of issues with the study and the data that they pulled out and the data that they chose to put in there.
So they say 14 calls per day, few law enforcement-related calls. What would your number be if we were to use an average?
As I stated earlier, it could be anywhere from 40% to 75, 80% of the calls are law enforcement-related, maybe investigating violations or whatever it might be. We have a significant number of other calls that come in that we don't keep track of in as far as the law enforcement, which is dealing with advising the public on wildlife interaction or what they should do to whatever it might be, or what areas can I go walk my dog, what laws do I need to be conscious of? So the numbers are higher than that.
So have you provided any numbers to the town administration or the select board as to what your average daily numbers are? I'm sure and I'm sure I've seen them.
We used to provide them in weekly and monthly reports. I do keep track of them for that.
What do you think... Tell us right now, what's the average calls per day?
The average calls per day, as I said, depending on the time of year, change, but looking back at last year, I believe last month's, I think we were averaging in the month of September about 23 calls or thereabouts. I would have to pull them out and look at them.
So slightly above, you know, a bit above that number?
Correct. Correct, and you've got to remember that's not 10, 15, 20 people going on them. It's one or two people going on because of the small staff.
Right. And I also noticed in the information that we were given that there typically, in a year, one to two arrests. Is that a fair observation?
That is fair. Many of those are dealing with boating under the influence or something like that.
So most of those are sort of water-related, which would probably be the harbor master?
Well, no, it would be the natural resource officers because they are the ones that are trained in that.
All right. Now, is the harbor master... Isn't the harbor master also?
I am the harbor master.
You are the harbor master, so you've got that covered.
I have assistant harbor masters, which are my natural resource officers, and then I have part-timers that help us out in the summer.
You do, so you've got that extra help, seasonal help, which is kind of when that problem persists. So I guess, I think the question for me isn't so much the decision about arming or unarming. Really, the decision for me is sort of the workload of the department, and does a department... Can we justify having four armed natural resource officers when the level of work there is, in terms of the need for that, to me, is not justified or demonstrated. I mean, that's been sort of the concern that I've had all along with this. I'm not prepared yet to make a recommendation or vote on something, a motion or an action that would say one way or the other, you're all unarmed or not. I'm more concerned about the volume of the activity, and if indeed we were to basically unarm the department, I would need more information to know where that activity would go, how would it be managed, but I do know that there's a decision that has to be made with one position. And so, you know, I'm sort of putting my taxpayer hat on, and I'm looking at the volume of activity, and I'm honestly asking myself, do we need a department with four armed law enforcement personnel when the number of arrests is one to two in a given year and the citations are relatively low? And when we have neighboring towns, Barnstable, Brewster, Dennis, I can go down the list, and I just came from, you know, being the interim town administrator in Brewster, and they have an enormous amount of conservation land and hunting land, and they've worked out a reasonably good arrangement with police in terms of how those areas are covered. I'm just saying, other towns have been able to, in their view, adequately manage with less, and so to me, I'm interested in your response.
Yeah, for Brewster, the Poncorn is one of the largest holdings, and it's... They don't allow hunting, so a lot of the property in the town of Brewster is not huntable, so their activity is much less. And those that I know that do hunt, other towns, they're not checked in that pursuit of those types of activities. You have to remember, the NROs do other tasks. They do the labor work, they do the trail cleaning, they do herring run work, they help with shellfish propagation because it's not a large staff. So some of the time that they could be out doing patrolling and doing that enforcement component is being done by, you know, being done labor-type of work. You know, could those numbers be higher? Absolutely, if they were just focusing on that type of activity. And then as far as the numbers go, we can start issuing citations and start bringing that up, but the direction that we've been given from past town administrators and boards was go out there and do public education and don't be heavy-handed out there. Educate them of what they're doing wrong. If you get a repeat offender, then of course you start to ratchet up the enforcement effort. So it's very hard to, you know, we could be doing much more if we had more staff as far as the enforcement, but that would mean that the other duties would not be being done, and no one else would be doing it. And if we weren't doing the enforcement, then PD would be doing it, and I highly doubt that our enforcement would rank very high on their priorities of doing enforcement jobs. So, you know, I think, you know, we do a very good job. We try to create the best balances we can and focus on the calls that do come in and the areas that we know we need to focus on to do the enforcement to best protect our environment, our natural resources, and our public.
I want to hear what you're saying. Do you... Are you surprised at all that there isn't any clamor in the other towns that are on the Cape that have unarmed natural resource officers, that there isn't any clamor or request or some push to arm them?
There is clamoring, but a lot of the departments are very small. There are, you know, for example, Barnstable, the director over there, he doesn't want the officers to be armed. He doesn't want, you know, they don't want to deal with the academy, they don't want to deal with that type of thing. So there's, you know, also very few communities that do everything that we do do underneath one department. So, you know, there is clamoring. I worked for the town of Dennis as a natural resource officer. At that time, we carried back in the 80s, and it was authorized. Barnstable at one time carried until the director left and a new director came in, and they didn't want... They didn't want to have that responsibility or want to go through the academy training or whatever it might have been. So there has been some shift and some changes in some departments, but I speak to the Barnstable officers, and they see a hunter and they wave and say hello, and that's the extent.
Yeah, no, I understand. No, I appreciate your commentary. I don't want it to be... To go unsaid that I don't appreciate the work that you do. I've worked with you and your department for a long, long time. You do a very good job for the town, and you have a very dedicated group of people working with you. I think with respect to this question, we have to make a decision, and that is, does the trend... Do we start moving like all the other departments, similar departments on the Cape, and move in the direction of unarmed natural resource officers, or do we not? Or do we not do that?
Yeah, actually, they haven't moved away from it, they just didn't move to it. Where Falmouth has, where Wareham has, where Plymouth has. So there is a movement towards that versus away from that.
Yeah. Well, in the memo that's been given to us by the administration, there's sort of multiple scenarios, scenario one, two, and three. I think, and that's what I'm looking at, so I think Eric put forth a motion that sort of adopts scenario three, if I'm not mistaken, or is that, I don't want to mischaracterize it, but I think that's what it's shooting for. I'm very comfortable with scenario two, which says backfill the position with the grade A technical position and choose to reinvest the additional wages in more seasonal staff. I think that's, the administration's looking for direction. I know you're not looking for direction. I'm not prepared yet to sort of fish and cut bait on the whole question of whether or not the department changes dramatically, but I think we're talking, in this case, these recommendations here, one, two, and three, the scenario two that's been laid out for us is one that I'm very comfortable with. So those are my thoughts.
My motion was for scenario three.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Okay, we got a second on that. It's time to move on. Let's vote. All those in favor of the motion, which would be scenario three, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, passes by a vote of three in favor, two against.
Thank you very much for your time and your support.
Board and committee actions, we have some appointments, I see.
Yep, we do. The first item we have to take care of is, has the board approving the appointment of Dan Knappich as trustee of the Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust? And I think there's a pile of paperwork in our folder here that sort of memorializes that.
Everybody needs to sign off on that if you would like to authorize me.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That's great. And the next item is an appointment to the library board. We're going to take this up at our last meeting, but it's carried over to tonight. And this is to appoint Angela Carboni to a three-year term on the library board running through February 2022. So.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's, thank you. The next is an appointment to the board of appeals for an alternate position, and this is Timothy Kelly. He's being recommended for a one-year term as an alternate on the zoning board of appeals running through January 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's unanimously, thank you. That concludes my set of recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
I move, we approve the minutes of April 25th and May 7th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Upcoming agenda review.
So this document should be updated as recently as last week, as we know things in front of us. So if there's anything else that you wanted to add, let me know. I do know, I'll make a special note that November 14th, which is a Thursday, also will coincide with town council hours. That's when Jay will be here. And the ocean club license, it's not an overly complicated topic, but I'd rather have him walk you through that situation. But I'll give you a memo about the ocean club in advance of that. But also on the 14th, that's the National Golf Foundation presentation on their work associated with Yarmouth Golf.
The October 22nd.
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to have the National Golf Foundation, that's going to be.
Yeah, you were going to be back on that for that day.
Right. And is that going to be the second, oh, no, the golf, the second hearing will be on the 19th?
Yeah, there'll be a memo coming out next week about the hearing, about the proposed fee increases.
Okay, will there be a presentation on the 22nd with regard to golf operations?
No, no golf, just, I mean, if you wanted some kind of wrap-up going into the 14th as it relates before the hearing as to how the end of the year went, I could have the director or the interim director provide that wrap-up for you.
I guess my, it's going to be awfully difficult for us to make decisions on fees with, without a, some sort of idea of how we're doing.
Well, the fees that, yeah, the fees that he's proposing are due to, Mike, I don't know all the details yet on it, but they're related to the increased price of operation, like for cart fees and whatnot.
Releases.
Yeah, so I'm going to send that to you in advance of that. But, and I'll save it for the memo, but certainly I can have him as part of that before the hearing, provide you a brief overview. You'll have it in the form of a memo to begin with anyway, so.
So are, would he, essentially saying that there will be no change in fees for the next year?
No. There, I don't, I'll save it for the memo. I don't have all that detail in front of me right now. But it was explained to me initially when this was asked to be put on the agenda, that certain cost of things like carts, because there's a new cart lease going forward, we need to advance the fee structure on that. And we are at a point where some of these other fees need to keep pace with inflation. So I'll let the director talk to you about that, in the form of a memo, it'll come on that. But that's only the first hearing. He's telling me he needs to raise certain fees in advance of next year.
Okay, so this has nothing to, when will we be addressing the basic member fees?
The National Golf Foundation's going to give you the lowdown on the whole scenario as it relates to our fee structure.
Okay. So that recommendation will be part of that meeting then?
Well, I think what you're going to hear from the foundation is we face significant challenges at the present fee structure that we're at now to stay viable. So I don't want to say more than that, but fair to say that I'll let the director give you a memo related to this specific increase he's looking for. But I think National Golf will lay out a future for us that, in order to stay viable, has got some sobering information for us all.
Okay, fair enough.
I have one question on the agenda. Is the wastewater update going to include some commentary on the DIF? You know, that proposal that's going to be on the town meeting warrant? And I, because I think we're going to have to provide a recommendation on that, and we agreed to put it on, but I, quite frankly, I don't think, I mean, we don't know much.
So on the 22nd, we had a response planned for several of the questions that were raised by the board. And I have a memo that I can send out today or got today to forward, I'll forward it to you tomorrow. And we're putting together the agenda now for that update to include all that information. And then just yesterday, we met with wastewater advisory, or the Water Resource Advisory Committee, met with Lou Nocinello on the DIF and got some presentation on that. And so I'm working with three of the members from the committee on the presentation for the 22nd. And so we'll make sure we consider that as part of the update.
Okay, thank you.
Who's going to be doing that presentation? The committee or is the consultant going to be here too?
So a lot of the questions you have are technical in nature, so Dave Young from CDM has written a memo that that's what I'll be forwarding to you. And he will be present to address them on the 22nd as well in front of you. And I'll be present to present some information and then those three members of the committee that want to participate in the update.
That's great.
I also added recently, I'm not sure if I had mentioned this before, but on November 19th, the Barnstable sealer of weights and measures and the director of their licensing program will be here to give a brief presentation on that program. As you may recall, we've been in a, about an 18 or 19-year municipal agreement that Barnstable handles our weights and measures activity. They do it for, I think, nine communities on the Cape. They have run into some financial issues that they would like to share with us. And they will also, at the time, have for our consideration a new revised intermunicipal agreement that addresses some of their challenges financially. So that, it's, you know, it was, I sat with them, I'm not sure if they're going to make it 15 minutes, but it is pretty interesting, all the things that they do for us that are involved in weights and measures. And it was just one of those opportunities to say, I'm glad that we don't have to have that staff in-house.
When they make sure they bring their fee structure and what they charge, because most of it's self-funded, I mean, most of it's for the service they provide.
No, it's a far cry from that, yeah.
What do you mean?
It's not self-sustaining at all.
Well, maybe they're not charging enough money, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, that's a very long discussion that I had with them and I'll, you can have that with them.
I'd like to, but I just would like to make sure that those fees are in here.
They had already mentioned the second highest fee structure in the state already and they weren't inclined to raise them, so.
Maybe we should be charging for water by the liter then.
Well, I was, there was, it was curious to note in the meeting that in this agreement from many years ago, on top of the fee structure assessed to the, to the public that was being waited, serviced, there was also other charges that were to be paid as part of the agreement to the towns that they were operating in, and they never collected those all these years. And, you know, that was kind of like, oh geez, that's on you. But, so it's, they're running a little short in money this year and that they wanted to revise the agreement and that's why they reached out to all the nine communities that they service.
Anybody have any other comments on the agenda? Okay, individual items. Eric, anything? Tracy?
Well, this weekend is the Seaside Festival, right?
Great.
Can you talk about that, Dan?
Yeah. You want me to do that now?
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you get to it, it's fun.
Yeah, so Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, the parade, of course, is the big one. I was asked to, if you're going to march, they just wanted to know, so you can send me an email tomorrow. Some folks have already let me know and I'll let them know. The weather work, I just got a warning from Barnstable County that the Saturday weather doesn't look really that great with this off-coastal storm. So, but it is an action-packed weekend of fun, so I hope it all works out great with the, with the weather being what it is.
Got that fun, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're guaranteed.
All bets are off if it's raining, buddy. You'll be spreading candy on your own.
But they do a great job, it's been going for a long time and I just, I hope the weather holds, so.
Yep.
Norm, you have anything?
I don't, no, thank you. I'm set, thanks.
Consent agenda.
There's a number of donations that are on this meeting's agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Is this the first year of the volleyball team at the landfill?
No, we did it, I believe, last year as well.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on that?
Yeah, right here.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Town administrator updates.
Uh, let's see. Ben Hubble to adjourn. Okay, that's, that sounds good.
Okay.
There, I do know Rich is talking about, just so you know, the DY, DHY is sitting on the governor's desk. We haven't heard about a signature situation. The other one that would be of interest is the charter changes from 2018's town meeting are really close to the finish line. So we've been corresponding with Senator Sears' office on that. There was some language that we had to work out, but that's close too. And that's something long awaited as well. But I do know Rich was talking about being in position, I think, for January to start conversation or having a concurrency or some kind of agreement on the agreement for DHY. So we have a lot of work cut out for us to get to that point.
Yeah, so the DHY working group and Dave Young through CDM has been coordinating this effort and they're trying to line us all up to reach a decision point so we can be prepared for a May town meeting. So I'm looking at the agenda, tentatively, of course, subject to your approval and questions. It looks like January might be a date and then looking back on December 17th would be a final update related to DHY, which hopefully would put you in position to vote on that or give direction on that. And so I'm working with that DHY working group and with Dave Young to make sure that we all, Yarmouth, Dennis, and Harwich communities, get the information in front of them that they need in order to make that decision. So a lot going on and.
The financial recommendation on staff part, we're going to get before that?
As far as all the different sources to finance it?
Whether or not you've gone through the numbers and you concur and then it's the savings that.
So as part of the memo that Dave Young has provided is in lieu to your questions and what I did just say in that response is I'm also working with a third party to address the questions you raised about some sort of peer review.
Okay, good.
And actually, I was just emailing someone tonight, so I'll follow up with them tomorrow. Bringing in another firm with that expertise that can speak to the work that's been done by CDM on behalf of the three towns. And so we're hoping to coordinate all that to be part of these meetings that have to happen and information that needs to happen.
Okay, good.
The last thing I have is the flu clinic has been scheduled for November 1st on Friday, 3:00 to 5:00. Need to make an appointment, information's on the website for that, so very popular event that occurs November 1st.
Mr. Chair, just one more thing, I forgot. There was a Cape Island's wastewater infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure fund committee meeting last week that I attended. They approved the bylaws of the committee. They also changed the bylaws to have a bylaws and regulations committee. So now there's a subcommittee that's working on the actual rules and regulations of kind of the, the key question that we've all been waiting for is how the money's going to be dispersed. So now that the committee itself has its operation bylaws in effect, the subcommittee will be working on that. So hopefully I'll have an update at the next meeting.
Do you have a date for the next meeting?
No, not yet. It won't be, it won't be in a paper, they said, so. They did get a deposit of $2.9 million to the fund, the, so the infrastructure fund is basically kind of being housed and deposited the money into the Clean Water Trust. So the Clean Water Trust did get a deposit for the expanded rooms tax of $2.9 million, and that's just for the month of July. So that was by the quarter, so each quarter will, will know, but, so they have $2.9 million in there now. So if that's an indication of what it might garner over the course, we probably take a year before we really know what it might be, but that was July's deposit.
Just the first quarter, just the month?
Just the month of July, yeah, because it only got implemented July 1st. So, and even with that, the people who had rental agreements prior to that, and so they were exempt from having to pay it. So next July will probably even be better than that. They had the gentleman from Clean Water Trust, but really the only question that was asked of him is whether or not, you know, if you apply for a grant from the Cape and Islands Fund, are you still eligible to get money from the Clean Water Trust Fund? And the answer was yes, so.
Motion adjourned?
Second. Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourn.